Colleagues, I will call to order the Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Katnick.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Present.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And clerk to the board, Kelly Camper, present.
Okay, now, we do have some amendments to the agenda, and do you have those back there, Brenda, the stuff that we moved from Friday to today?
I think they're all on here.
That's on here.
They're all on there.
So what I have here is an updated one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, did you want an audience introduction? It's not on here, but I think that's normally next.
Well, we amend the agenda before we get to the other.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so were any amendments to the agenda at this point in time?
Nope.
No changes.
I would like to ask that the audience introduce themselves, please. We'll start over here.
I'm Bill Parker.
Dallas Anderson, Airport Advisory Board.
John Johnston.
Welcome. At this time, I would like to open up to call your comment. We have none, okay. Approval of the minutes, please. I have in receipt the minutes from the, what date is that, Kelly? Eighteenth of April?
Eighteenth, yeah.
I didn't see any changes. Did any of either of you find any additions or corrections to these minutes? Or do you need to take just a second to review and zip this down?
I reviewed them.
I reviewed them. I thought they were well done.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second?
I'll second it.
Made and seconded. Any discussion at this time? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Approved, same sign. Minutes approved. Commissioner Items. Mr. Prince.
I have one, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, the Affordable Housing Committee met in this room. An excellent, excellent meeting. We had, Dola was present, and we had the COG Housing Representative present. At the moment, just for your knowledge, we have twenty residents in affordable housing in Custer County. There's sixty applicants waiting, and it's about a three-year wait span to get into affordable housing. This was a, this is one of these terrific meetings. You walked out going, "This is gonna work." There is a company called Cardinal Capital. They build affordable housing throughout Colorado. They're in a project right now, a large project in Canyon City. They've done it in Salida. They've built houses. What it takes for them to become, for them to build one, affordable housing in Custer County is that we do a study, a needs assessment study. The needs assessment study costs about $25,000, of which Dola instantly said, "We'll match half of it if we, Custer County," and I'm not talking about the commissioners, "come up with the additional $12,500." Assuming that we get the study done, and the lady from COG had the person who does them, or several of them that do them, the study takes about three months, then it goes to Cardinal Capital. Cardinal Capital then does a turnkey operation with the approval of the Board of County Commissioners. So we get to approve the aesthetics where it is. If either of the towns or the county has land to build, nor it'll be that much faster and easier for Dola to come up with the money for them to do it.
Can that land be used as a partial match?
It can be, yes. The discussion centered around, we had both towns, and I represented the county, of course, feeling that the total amount that the entities need to come up with for matching is $12,500. We felt that if both towns were able to participate, plus the county, Monty Lee from the school board said he felt pretty certain the school would be happy to do this, be involved. The community foundation representative said, "I think we'd be interested." So the contribution from Custer County itself will be small, as it will be from each, because we'll have so many people coming in. Once the study is done, capital, financial capital, it's Cardinal Capital, I'm sorry, gets the study, they do everything. They do all the permitting, they do all the planning, they do everything. We approve to make sure that the aesthetics of the building are what it is. They'll add whatever number of rooms they feel is appropriate with the help of Dola and COG. They were all involved also. After fifteen years, ownership, if we want, will turn over to us. I was concerned, my comment was, if there's a tremendous amount of upkeep on the facility, I'm not sure the county may want to own it, this is not a necessity, it's an option. So I just wanted to just put a little bug in your ears that we're moving forward on this. It was extremely beneficial, and it appears as if we have a significant need. The last time this study was done in 2008, so you can see it's very old and it's not up to date. And rather than updating, it was less expensive, believe it or not, just to do a whole new study. So with Dola, and with COG, and with all of the entities in the community kicking in, I think we have a very strong vibe of teams to take care of our, and here's who it really helps. It helps our veterans, number one. It helps our elderly. It helps our folks who don't have sufficient funds. But half of the housing we have now is veterans. About a half of the other half, a quarter, is elderly, and the rest is just individuals who don't have sufficient funds. So we're really taking care of our veterans, and with our large veteran population, I was very excited about this project. So I'll keep you posted as we go.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just wondering, I'm not sure if all three of us were in attendance down at COG, where there was a presentation with the group of affordable housing. Is this that same building?
Same group.
Okay.
The head of that came up to talk to our Affordable Housing Custer County group to talk to us how, the last two meetings, I kept saying, "We're doing a lot of talking. How are we gonna get something done?" So we brought these people up, and they said, "This is what you need to do." The committee said, "Wonderful, and we're moving forward."
Please clarify, you said Dola for fifty percent?
Fifty percent.
What role will COG play?
I'm sorry, sir?
What role does COG play?
COG is just kinda helps the Cardinal Capital, the builder of this, determine what the needs are for our county based upon the assessment that we get. The reason this Cardinal Capital doesn't, I'm sorry.
But there's no renowned rare funding from COG, but there will be a necessary assistance from COG?
Actually, if they're, if they want, this Cardinal Capital, who has vast experience in Colorado, has put up many of these, like, nine of them.
Right, Cardinal Capital's been on them two or four years.
Exactly. So COG will be involved with them as much as they feel they need to be, but we're gonna reap the benefit. What is Cardinal Capital? They get tax credits for doing this, up to nine percent of the project. So that's their incentive for doing this. It's a financial benefit for them, but it's a wonderful benefit for us and our veterans.
Second comment?
Sure.
And I don't mean to put an extra burden, but could you or somebody with the committee summarize all this kind of executive summary or something, so we've got a written copy of it? Not today, but...
I'd be delighted.
So that we've got the details and stuff. I've got it here in a minute, but this will be in more.
I'd be delighted to, either I'll do it, or I'll ask the chairman of the board to do it, but I will get this in writing.
Super.
Something for us to review.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Hold on.
I would like to set a workshop and extend the invitation to Economic Development, Charles Dale and Wilson, to discuss the Open Media from SIPA that was forwarded to us because they're waiting for our response. This could be a great opportunity for us to get some funding from them and support. So I'm gonna ask Brenda if you can, maybe we can come up with some dates and contact Economic Development to discuss the Open Media Foundation. According to the email that I received, they were both copied. So both Charles Dale and Wilson are aware of the proposal.
Now, weren't we going to schedule some workshops on Friday?
We have workshops already.
What do we have?
In the morning, we have OEM. In the afternoon, we have Policy. So this is my...
Yeah, that's right. That's right. I just couldn't think of the times that we haven't, yeah.
Twelve might work, if that works for the owner, for you too.
Twelve worked for me.
I apologize. What is SIPA again?
Statewide Internet Portal Authority?
Portal Authority, yes. The twelfth looks good, so we could check.
What do you have on the eleventh?
Say one.
Oh, you know what? They have that assessment going on.
I made my development focus group on the eleventh.
Yeah, they did get the results on the twelfth, so I don't know that that's a good day.
I'd say it was, oh, the twelfth's not good?
No, 'cause they, they have their assessment.
Community assessment.
Oh, yeah, I see.
The tenth, eleventh, and the twelfth.
The next time I could do it would be the eighteenth to the nineteenth.
Okay. I can't do it then.
How about tonight, Tuesday the ninth? Or Wednesday, the tenth?
You're out of town.
I'm out of town. Well, now, wait a minute. If we did it Wednesday, the tenth, and if we could do it in the afternoon, say, maybe two o'clock?
Yep, no, that's their assessment.
Oh, it's the tenth, the eleventh, and the twelfth. Yeah, I just have us down on the eleventh.
What's, the eighth look like?
I won't be here.
You won't be here.
Go ahead, but I can't, I was at a doctor's appointment, the cancer doctor that day.
If we did it early on the fifteenth, I could do it. Or as a nineteen, I leave all my Fridays open for workshops, so if you want, just put it out two weeks, I'm fine.
Well, maybe they'd be, I don't know what time they wrap up. Maybe we could just wait.
Let's check whether maybe we do it in the afternoon on the, on the twelfth.
On the twelfth? Because maybe they'll done, they're done in the morning.
This shouldn't take too long, should it? Couple hours?
Not even that. This is just, since they got this copy, it's, they just wanna know, I just wanna review what's here, okay? And see if there's any things we should be asking.
Now, do we have any workshops tomorrow?
Yeah.
We have a meeting tomorrow, no workshop.
No workshop in the afternoon.
Could they, could they, could we do it tomorrow? Do you have any, are you being in the afternoon?
I have a two o'clock and a three o'clock tomorrow afternoon. I mean, I can move both of them if I need to. This would come, this would take...
It won't take any, it may not even take any off.
What, you wanna do it right after the board meeting?
But we won't know what time to say to them.
Twelve o'clock.
We could say twelve. Can you try twelve?
Sure.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
I'm gonna put it in, and if it needs a change...
Let's do it tomorrow, twelve o'clock?
Yep.
That's a good thing this isn't a ten-person board. We'd be here for a week trying to figure this out.
Well, we have to post it. We have to post it, so it has to be posted by noon.
Well, the problem I've got is that, for the rest of you, my wife is having cataract surgeries. One eye done, and then the next week she's having the other eye done, and we have to follow-up appointments, so Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday the next two weeks, I get to drive up and down the road to Colorado Springs.
Not a problem.
It's all good. Doesn't critical, but routine.
Dr. Chang?
Pardon me?
Dr. Chang?
I didn't, Dr. Chang?
Dr. Chang.
No, Dr. Wright. We felt that we were gonna do it, we needed to have the right doctor.
But a bump, a bump.
It is called the right, I say.
Okay, the only other thing I had was, met with Chuck yesterday, and he was gonna be contacting C-Com, Hilltop, and Sentrylink. Sentrylink did not get back to him Friday afternoon, 'cause they were asked to sharpen their pencil. So he was following up to find out what sort of guarantee, if any, if the electric went down with the fiber, how much longer the county would be up. And then what do we need on our end as far as a UPS station to keep us up in the county? So we're waiting for the answers to those questions to move forward with the recommendation of fiber.
Anything else? Oh, this is just, just asked the guy to kick tires, but I forget who it is, the workshop surplus now, but I'll, I'll put the word out that watch the government surplus, and if we find a good generator that we think would be useful, 'cause it's not gonna cost us a lot, we may wanna consider having it as a standby.
Yeah, I also had somebody come that worked with Chuck on Friday, and he's gonna be giving a quote to the generator.
This will, you know, this, what we're looking at won't be new. It'll be surplus, but at the same time, that's what we've got for the county shop, that's what we have for the sheriff's office, so...
Well, we'll need three quotes, so...
Well, yeah, and if we come in though, and we've got, I don't like to do things on a temporary basis, but it's gonna probably cost eight or $10,000 or more for a self-starting generator. And if in the meantime, because we can always use this portable generator on scenes if we have accidents or recoveries or whatever, just pass and comment. I guess I don't have anything. It was just Friday.
Okay, yep.
And yesterday, I kept my head down, so I think that's where we are. I do, would like to, we have a couple, three new people in the audience, if you'd introduce yourselves, we've got your name on tape.
Amy Walton, with the West Custer County Library.
Phil Baker. Okay. Attorney Items.
I don't know if you wanna talk about the bid that Dallas Anderson got on that fuel dispenser now, and I looked over the contract, it's actually an acceptance of bid, but it would create a contract. I'm not thrilled about the way they have it all loaded up in their favor on the liability end of it. They do have workers' comp insurance. They don't have any surety bond or performance bond. If we want them to have that in order to do the installation, then they will add the cost of that bond onto the price of the contract. But a lot of this language puts all the liability, except if there is, if they're proven to be negligent in something they did for any damage, personal injury, or death, they're responsible. It's acceptable, I just, I don't like it when somebody submits one, it's just all in favor of them and very little in favor of the party they're contracting with, but I, I don't have any, there's nothing in here that's a deal breaker, as far as I'm concerned.
You say that it's not protecting us. What protections would we need?
Well, I, I mean, the general liability, liability insurance the county has would cover, I mean, through CTSI, would cover everything, you know, including property damage, personal injury, death in relation to this job. I don't think that there's anything more the county, I mean, they have the workers' comp, that's the main thing. You know, they're not accepting any responsibility in case there's some violation with governmental agency for pollution, environmental damage, et cetera, but that would really all be related to the storage tanks, and they're not, storage tanks aren't an issue in this case. I mean, bottom line, it's what lawyers do, and it's, I don't see that it's really gonna be an issue in this case. They're, they're making it clear, they're not responsible if there's any malfunction or defect in the pump itself, that's an issue that we deal directly with the manufacturer. They're not responsible for that. So I, like I said, I, I guess I would recommend that we just go ahead and approve this, and I don't know if they're gonna send another contractor, if this is going to be the contract. It's really just an acceptance of their bid with a line to be signed if we do accept it by Bob. And I don't know if there's gonna be a separate agreement forthcoming, I doubt it. I think this would be the, be the contract.
What type of inspections can we have, or do we need out there? Does anyone, does anyone do any inspections on this?
The inspections that are required are yearly for weights and measures, and every three years, we have a pressure test that the state does on the whole system.
What do they charge us for that pressure test?
It was six hundred and, it was over $600 this last time.
Maybe someone else could do it, but I'm thinking maybe we wanna have a pressure test on that system, so that we don't, we know we don't have any leaks? If they do the pressure testing or whatever, but just so we're not done?
Well, he and I talked about that last year, about the final installation, and they would do a pressure test on it before they went.
Is that in there anyplace?
I didn't see that in particular, but we can certainly make sure.
I think it is alluded to in the scope of work list.
Okay. Is this getting too deep to reach?
Nope. I think that's important, because if everybody's happy, I'm gonna recommend we sign it in a minute.
Did you have some thoughts while he's looking?
Verify proper operation of new fuel dispenser and calibrate dispenser. That would include a pressure test, I assume, if they're...
I would really tell them that it needs to be a pressure test, yeah. Just, just to make sure. All the, all the plumbing that will be taken apart and put back together is all external, easy, easy to check if there was any leaks, you just tighten it up.
Yeah, I don't think we have, I mean, it's not, it's not a tremendous project, I mean, we're talking feet instead of miles, and if they damaged something, the only we're looking at probably is the cement around the retaining wall, or the pad that the pump sits on.
The cement, the pad that the pump sits on. They have nothing to do with the tank, the retaining structure for the pump, I mean, the tank or anything like that.
But they have to plumb down to the tank, don't they, or is it just...
No, it's plumbed right...
They're only gonna be working right at the pump?
They'll, they'll disconnect four pipe connections, set the new...
These are all above ground?
Dispenser, they are, above ground, yeah, and just glue it all back together. I asked the guy last year how long it would take, and he said, "The better part of the day, two at the most," is his exact words.
Well, we are under what we'd anticipate if our original bid, I recall. Any other discussion? I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid?
Thank you. I was gonna say, I'll make a motion that, based on council's review of the contract and the comments from the chairman of the committee, that we accept the bid of Eaton, I have the full name in front of me, to replace the, the fuel dispenser at the...
I'll make a motion to second that, Mr. Lee.
Move in a second to accept the bid submitted by the name of the company?
Eaton, I believe, Sales and Service?
Yeah, Eaton, E-A-T-O-N, Sales and Service, and the bid was $8,850. I think you should have that dollar amount in there.
Is there any other discussion? Call in favor, say aye. All right. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
If you wanna sign that.
I'll sign this, and Dallas, you can get after it then.
All right. Get that thing scheduled and get it done. Hope that old pump doesn't fall apart before we get to new it, then.
Do you need, I guess we don't need to have this tested, too?
No, I'll give it two. Brendan, just a, for other three items, I had, I had two resolutions I prepared at the direction of the board. One was for the closure of County Road 386, effective immediately until further action by this board. And then the other one was a resolution appointing managing commissioners as recommended by Dennis Hunt. I believe I wasn't present for that workshop, but I, so, I don't know if you had a chance to look at those yet or not. I'll get this to Brendan real quick.
Okay, the first resolution we have is Resolution Number 1708, a resolution appointing managing commissioners for the oversight and supervision of departments and offices of Custer County. Whereas pursuant to thirty dash eleven dash one oh seven N, the Colorado statute, Custer County Board of County Commissioners place subdivision of the state of Colorado is authorized to create by resolution duly appointed such offices as may in its judgment be required for the efficient management of the business and concerns of the county. And whereas the board is authorized to make appointments to the offices so created and to prescribe duties to be performed by such appointees. And whereas it has been the longstanding practice of the Custer County Board of County Commissioners to assign particular commissioner each year to serve as a point of contact for the various departments and offices of the Custer County Government, to report regularly to the board, and that there are, and that are subject to the oversight and supervision of the board. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County wishes to continue this longstanding practice, it believes it needs to be done in accordance with the statutory procedure referenced above, that the point of contact should be designated as managing commissioners. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Custer County Commissioners for Custer County that managing commissioners shall be appointed as follows. Number one, Commissioner Robert Katnick shall be appointed to oversee and supervise the following departments and offices, Office of Emergency Management, Road and Bridge, Landfill Recycling, District and Service Office. Number two, whereas Donna L. Hood, Commissioner Donna L. Hood, will be appointed to oversee and supervise the following departments and offices, Human Resource Finance, Custodial Grounds and Maintenance, Buildings Resource Center at the ANX, Extension in the Information Technology, GIS. Number three, whereas J.D. Prince shall be appointed to oversee and supervise the following departments and offices, Useful Public Service, Affordable Housing, Airport Advisory Board, Planning and Zoning, Office, Human Services, and Public Health. Commissioners Katnick, Hood, and Prince shall be appointed to serve as joint managing commissioners for the Courthouse Security Board, done the second day of May 2017, effective retroactively to the tenth day of January 2017.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Seventeen Dash O Eight, a resolution appointing managing commissioners for the oversight and supervision of department or offices of the county, Custer County Government.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion as stated.
Discussion. This is just another part of what we did the first of January, nobody's, responsibilities are changed or anything, but this is just something that they felt that we needed to do, but by resolution each year. Hearing the whole of the discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Just a moment. I have before me Resolution Number Seventeen Oh Nine, a resolution closing Custer County Road 386 until further notice. Whereas a wildfire known as the Junkins Fire caused extensive damage to the trees and vegetation in a significant area of land located in eastern part of Custer County. And whereas as a result of the Junkins Fire, County Road 386 is unsafe because of the risk of flooding and landslides, as well as other potential eventual disasters, and should not be open to the public at this time. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County has the statutory authority to temporarily close a public road. This action is necessary to protect health, safety, and the general welfare of the citizens of the county. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners is satisfied that a closure of County Road 386 is necessary at this time for these reasons. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Custer County Commissioners for Custer County, that County Road 386 should be and is hereby closed to all non-authorized motorized traffic, including off-road vehicles. This closure shall be for the entire length of the county road from its junction with Colorado Highway 165 on the west to its junction with County Road 387 on the east. Shall take effect as of the date of this resolution and shall remain in effect until further notice. Pedestrians and riders on horseback shall not be prohibited from using the road, but they will do so at their own risk. Custer County Road and Bridge Department shall take appropriate steps to block access to the County Road 386. to the County Road 386 in both directions and shall cause appropriate signings to be posted at both ends advising the public of this closure. A couple of things I would like to bring up to date on. First of all, we only have two sections of the road that are county road on private property. We have about two miles on the east end from the junction of 386 across Bill Donnelly's private land to the forest boundary. And then on the west end, we have about probably 300 yards of private land from Highway 165 until you reach the forest boundary. The Forest Service has already closed the road that they have jurisdiction over, and we've been in agreement. It's something I think we need to, from a safety standpoint. Now, other additional things that have occurred recently, the Forest Service, I understand, has about seventy thousand dollars that they're going to use to go in and be in a position to fix some of those culverts and so forth. They're wanting to do this sooner rather than later. It is, I think, a fairly high risk as we go down the road. If we've got moisture, there are still rocks coming off the hill. And if we get any type of flood event, I expect we'll see a fair amount of debris that will come off the side hills and onto the road. And I think at this time, as we said, until such time as it's safe, I wouldn't anticipate this closure probably lasting more than, I don't know. If we... Depends on flood events, how much damage is done. But the Forest Service attitude is they're going to fix their portion of the road. And so I think it's, you know, it's going to be shorter rather than longer. But it depends on the flood potential, whether it remains in the burn area. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve Resolution Number Seventeen Oh Nine?
I move that we approve Resolution Number Seventeen Oh Nine, a resolution closing Custer County Road 386 until further notice.
I'll second the motion as stated.
Is there any discussion?
The only thing I'm a little concerned about, we talk about putting up signage. I just want to make sure the signage not only says the road is closed, but also says if pedestrian or equestrian use is at risk only, at their own risk only. Just want to make sure the sign has both that on it, closure and the risk assumption.
Okay. Let's see what signings we have available. The road's already closed. The Forest Service built the bars to close the road, and Road and Bridge installed them. They are closed and locked. We strongly discourage anybody going up and down there. They're welcome to recreate on the forest. But I think we also, in addition to that, if we don't have already, need to have listed flooding or whatever so that, you know, in case flooding climbed to higher ground or something. But we do have quite a little signage on there already, Jay, from the Forest Service side, but they're... They've got the forest stuff on our road, I mean, on our end of the road. The other thing is that, and maybe we need to reword this just a little bit, well, we have our pedestrians and riders on horseback shall not be prohibited from using the road due to their own risk.
I'd like the sign to say that.
Jeff Outhier has asked, he asked for this resolution, and he wants to post it on both ends, on their posties boards with information.
Fine.
So would that suffice, do you think?
As long as it has the, you're entering at your own risk if you choose to go in. That's all I'd want. Would like it to say that.
Because this is a site issue, but another problem we're having is that they're going across to private land, not on a road, to access the forest. And this is causing especially Bill Donnelly a little bit of concern, we've got a lot of people walking across the land.
I don't blame you.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Any other attorney items at this time?
Do you want to talk about the meeting?
Oh, yes. Brenda called to my attention when we changed the location of the meetings as for June and July?
Yeah.
Refresh my memory, we're doing the June meeting in...
In Wetmore instead of San Isabel. And then we'll do the July meeting in San Isabel.
And I think that should be a formal motion to amend the schedule, the annual schedule that was set for the meetings. We should do that by motion and a vote.
Well, we also changed the first week of June's meetings because we're going to CCI. Should that be in the same motion?
I think we already motioned that last Friday.
I don't have the minutes.
I don't remember.
Let me check real quick. I got it in nine minutes.
It's okay to overmotion it, I guess, if you have it.
I'm almost positive you didn't motion on that.
No, we don't have a copy of those minutes.
Not yet.
Kelly, wait, no.
Yes, we motioned that one.
So just a motion then to change the June meeting from San Isabel to Wetmore and the wet, the July meeting from Wetmore to San Isabel.
Right. I make a motion that we change the June Board of County Commissioner meeting scheduled for whatever that day is.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-first of June from San Isabel to Wetmore. And I also, we will change the July, the July meeting, which is July the twenty...
Nineteenth.
When?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, from Wetmore to San Isabel.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Any discussion, we'll vote on a motion on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
No, it was attorney.
Thank you very much. At this time, do we have the need for an executive session?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Clint, are you going to be at the workshop this afternoon?
Yes, I'll be.
Okay. But not at this time.
Okay. This time right now, move into old business. And we have a report. Justin, I'll get to you in just a few minutes for your next, after this one.
No worries.
We have a library report from Amy. And Amy, would you like to come join us, please? This is Amy Moulton. Lady that keeps her library going.
Good morning. So it looks like you have the packet in front of you there.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful.
Looking through it, all I can say is wow.
Yeah, yeah. It's been a very positive, or it was a very positive year last year, and things are continuing to roll that way this year. You know, I don't want to read what you already have in front of you, but I guess I would just highlight that, you know, that we're continuing to see an uptick in circulation and the number of checkouts that people are having from year to year, which is positive. And of course, that reflects very well on Norm Giandro, who does the purchasing of our items. Also, we've really made a change in the last several years to getting rid of items that are not being read and having more new items available. And increased our budget through a number of avenues in order to be able to do that. One thing is the state does send us four thousand a year, and that's very helpful. But also, as the budget allows, we've been gradually increasing that as well to be more in line with what other libraries our size and with our revenues are doing, so.
Amy, I have a question.
Yes.
I know, I believe you still have the workforce kiosk in the library.
You know, it's not that it's a kiosk. What we did is met with them and determined and kind of a more flexible way of doing that. Our internet does allow for people to do, to do that in order to video chat with a counselor, with the workforce. However, I think the key problem is that it's not being advertised enough by workforce, or at least it's not being recommended to their clients that come in. So we have the facility available if people would choose to do that. And what that would look like is they would, they and their counselor would schedule time in our community room so that they have privacy, and they could use a laptop or an iPad in order to do so, have that discussion, but, you know...
So that's not on the library?
It's not on the library. That's something that if the workforce would like to recommend that to their, I don't want to say patrons, but their customers, what have you, then they... Client, thank you. Then they can do that, but...
I think we need to possibly also do something as a board that we promote workforce. And I, this is just right off the top of my head, completely cool, but we may, if possible, we might even put a sticker or something that says workforce assistance available.
Hmm, that's interesting.
On the window as people walk by or whatever, as a reminder that, maybe contact information or whatever.
Okay.
Make it, I don't want to add to your burden, but I'm just saying something that reminds you that this is...
Exactly. And I think that's the issue. It's ongoing marketing because, of course, when this first was established, it was in the newspaper and all of that. But I know that Charles Vogel, we've spoken about it, and he's saying that they do need to, and could be in conjunction with us. I think that's fine. It's appropriate for us to work together and have outreach to different entities that may be able to point people in our direction and more regular notices.
I'm just going to say, I doubt that our business community here knows that that exists.
You know, I don't know whether that's true or not. I think part of it is that the business community doesn't necessarily list their positions with the workforce. And that's what I'm hearing. It's kind of chicken or the egg situation over and over where if our businesses don't list the jobs, then what's the purpose of our, yeah, our community, our people going to them and looking for that? So it's a multi-level education, you know? So many of the job positions are filled by word of mouth around here.
I'm just wondering if maybe there should be some signage at the economic slash chamber office in the window. Could you get, that's where you're getting traffic.
Do you feel like that someone looking for a job would be going to that location?
To the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, are they?
I mean, I'm just saying.
Yeah, that would be me.
That's business.
Yeah.
I don't know. I just think that anything that helps with the communication.
Absolutely.
And location.
What came up was the towns, I think perhaps social services. I think the chamber would be a good location, having something, I think having, what we can do is have something that at least that's more visible, like you said, whether that's, you know, workforce assistance here or something like that. That's a great idea. So it's something simple we could do.
Can I go back to traditional library services?
Sure.
I read your report last night, very comprehensive. I compliment you on the great work you're doing.
Thank you.
Just throwing this out, I don't know why. I'm obviously a member of our library. I'm also a member of the Austin, Texas Public Library. The reason I am is because of my eye conditions. I have a real hard time reading books.
Yes.
I listen to books.
Yes.
And you have a wonderful selection. They have a wonderfuler selection, if that's a word.
Sure, sure.
But here's how they do it, because I asked them about it because I wanted to speak to you about it. This may not even be the right form, but anyway, people that live outside the state of Texas, they charge a hundred and twenty dollars a year to take out up to, I think it's six audio books a month.
Okay.
Which is a great deal, ten dollars a month. Have we considered maybe expanding our audio book section and maybe charging a fee for the use of that to help supplement the cost of the royalties and the other fees that need to be paid?
Okay. I'll tell you what, there are a couple of things going on there. First of all, we have a very limited amount of space. So that's, it has to work within the percentage of other materials that we have. So what we're doing currently, and you probably spotted this in here, is that we're building our e-audio book collection.
That's what we're doing, the e-audio.
Yeah, exactly.
Download it on my phone.
Exactly. So we do have that available. We're building that up, and boy, I got to tell you, just as a library, we don't like charging for things. So I think if we were to expand it, we would do so by grant purposes or any other method before we would charge anybody a dime. I just don't feel like that's the role of a library. So anyway, so of course, we do have some hard copy available or disc, but the e-audio and trying to continually build on that, we actually are putting a part of our budget, a chunk of that, and I can talk to you about that. Six hundred actually is what it is each year towards developing that. And since it's a consortium, that more than a hundred libraries are putting money into that same ebook, e-audio book thing, then, you know, each one of those is putting money in as well. So it's a relatively new thing for us. I want to say we've been doing audiobooks only for about a year, a year and a half. So that collection, though, is growing leaps and bounds because we all think that's important. Yeah. The other thing that's available to anybody in the state of Colorado who has a site issue, actually, and it can be anything, it can be involved with site, or it can be holding a book or what have you, is the Colorado Talking Books Library. Are you familiar with that?
No.
Okay, so that is completely free. Granted, that's not e-audio, but they do have a large selection of audiobooks, and there's a device that you can get to play those. But that's completely free, as are large print books. And so that's something that you can apply for, and then it's sent back and forth free through the mail. Yeah, absolutely.
Good, kicked up good work.
Thank you very much.
Couple of things. First of all, I congratulate you on what you have.
Thank you.
This is personal, not commissioner.
Okay.
But I would like to see what we can do to expand the local history section. I don't know what we can do. I haven't even dug into it a whole lot, but, you know, when we go over there, we've got some nice pictures and stuff that Bud Pickett donated and stuff, but just, you know, it might be as a source for local people, local historians, or people that want to know about the area.
Yeah.
I don't know what we could do, if we even could do anything, but that would be one thought that I would have as in the future possible.
You know, and I'd like to recommend to you, and I'm sorry if you weren't done.
No, no, what?
I'd love to have you make an appointment with me and stop by and let me show you what we do have, because the Bud Pickett books are a very small fraction of what we have. We actually have, in the assistant director's office, it's mostly local history.
Okay, so it's off the main floor then?
Well, yeah, exactly, because we do want to be able to pull those and file them back properly.
You're way ahead of me. See, I hadn't found that part of it.
Yeah.
And I hadn't asked about it either.
And there's a digital archive as well, and that's something that you can access from your computer, you can access from home if you go to our homepage and it's, or to our website, it's westcasterlibrary.org. And scroll down on there, it's called past perfect. And you can look up photographs, there are thousands of photographs in there, as well as what we do, we work with the other local history entities in the area, the Old School House.
So we've got a much better base than I had it to say.
Oh, much more, and the museum and such. And so we have also catalogued all of their items so somebody can come to our central location and see photographs of items that are in the museum as well.
That might be something.
So it's much more comprehensive.
Something we do from the chamber side, where when people come to town and want to know stuff, say that we do have a local history section.
And we'll be working with the...
Another thing for people who live in there.
The heritage, let's see here, what is it in September, the new?
Pilgrimage.
Pilgrimage, thank you very much. We'll be participating with that this year. So I think that'll help get the word out also to local some people visiting.
Great.
The other question I had is number eight on your second round, first pitch, I guess. We had three thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine public computer sessions.
Yes.
And we had four thousand two hundred and forty-four Wi-Fi sessions.
That's correct.
Now, this thirty-eight seventy-nine could compose a large portion of the forty-two forty-four.
No, those are completely separate.
So we've had over four thousand people come to the computer, let me come to the library, to utilize the Wi-Fi.
Yes, absolutely. As a matter of fact, what we're seeing is there, we're seeing the numbers switch in that it used to be people were mostly coming to use our computers, and now we're seeing people sitting all over the library with their own devices and using our Wi-Fi because it is so fast.
And what kind of speed do you have down there?
We're thirty down.
So your base here right now classified as a broadband?
Yes, we are.
So what we have here are forty-two... So what we have here are forty-two forty, over four thousand people that go to the library to access broadband, and probably the reason they do is they don't have access at other locations.
Well, I think we're seeing a number of reasons why people are doing that. So, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to point it out in the, in the memo to you all is that you can add those two together, because the public computer sessions, that's when somebody comes in. We have currently six public computers. We're going to have seven shortly, and they can sit down, access the internet, whatever. They're using our computers. The Wi-Fi is completely, that's non-staff use. That's only other people who are coming in with their devices or sitting outside and using ours. And so they're not only doing that because they perhaps don't have access at home, but ours is so much faster that they come in to do work and special projects.
Are you on fiber or down?
No, we're on CCOM.
Okay.
But actually, I'll say that we are, so that we have a redundant connection in case anybody goes down. We have CenturyLink and CCOM. So we often see when, when people's services go down, they come into the library because we have both.
And CenturyLink is offering thirty down also?
No, not even close, not even close.
I just thought I'd put that out there.
That's only for the redundancy because also our library catalog.
If you want to.
Not even close.
Okay.
But it keeps us up and running if CCOM does go down for some reason.
So how much do you think your usage is going to want because you do have computer abilities?
You know, I think that all just kind of goes hand in hand because our library services are also going, they aren't going towards only digital because of course, people are appreciating the materials in hand as well, but we're adding those services. So, you know, what's, what's interesting is the more services we add that people can access from home, you would think that our library visits would be going down, but you're right. I mean, people are coming in to access things that like the.
Because they don't have that service.
No, they don't have that service at home. So, so where we should be seeing a big fall off in numbers, we're not, because we have other things that draw them to the library, like the Wi-Fi.
Do we have any more questions?
Good. Great job.
Can I give you just a few more things, so you're aware of it?
Just quick.
This is of course, 2016. Just so you're aware, there are a few things that are new and upcoming. We had, I said Camp Happiness here on the Tax Dollars at Work, number nine A. It's hands-on learning for ages zero through six. What our youth services librarian Jessica Carter found was that older siblings were coming along and enjoying it, but feeling like it was at times more for babies. And so she split that off. Camp Happiness has actually become a program for K through third graders. Very popular, very well attended. That's an hour and a half long program with reading and art and science and all sorts of hands-on things, dance and such. And she started a new program, monthly program called Play to Learn, which is an infant's through pre-K playgroup for mothers and their children, and it's guided play. So she'll have stations, but they can go around and do things at their own pace. A good learning experience.
Is that listed here?
That is not, because it's not 2016.
Called a place to learn?
Play, Play to Learn is new for 2017, and that's why it's not on here.
That's why, that's why should I get them all down?
Okay. Also, we tried something new. We've been doing the adult reading program during the summers for the last few years. This year, we did it January through March, winter, because we found our patrons were saying that's when they have time to read. And so that was successful, and we're analyzing pros and cons on both of those, and we'll decide on that for next year. Also coming.
Can you summarize it for me?
Yes. So the winter adult reading program is really intended to encourage adults, give them motivation to continue their reading for pleasure and for learning. We, we have found that adults tend to feel some guilt when they have very full lives, taking time to read. And of course, reading is so important for adults as well, not only to reduce stress and increase their vocabulary, but it also improves memory. I mean, we're finding, these are the things that help people hold on to important skill sets. So we have a bingo sheet that they check out, and each of the spots on the bingo sheet is a task or a book or some sort of learning experience. And as they complete those bingos, they receive a prize. All of the prizes are coming from businesses in the community, so it doesn't cost us a dime. You did.
Oh, did I?
Yes, you did.
Never mind that.
Thank you.
But you can do it again.
You can do it again.
I was quietly saying.
Next year, actually, if I could plant a bug in your ear, I think what we're going to do for next year's program is a one book for the county kind of thing, one book for the cliffs. And so we'll have many copies of a single book that the community will help us choose, and then we can all read the same book, and we'll have several different events in different locations to talk about what we think about that. So a nice, everybody from different backgrounds and beliefs being able to talk about what they think. Okay, so does that answer your question about the winter reading program?
Yep.
Okay, also, we have become so busy that we're trying to figure out how to streamline activity, repetitive tasks and all of that at the library so that we can keep up with it with the staff we have, because as you all know, it's not looking like the budget's going to be going up this year.
Correct.
If anything, it's, looks like it may be cut because of various tax issues. So we are going to be adding very soon a self-checkout station. That is not intended to replace anything. It's just to try to help us out. So people who, what's that?
I said Walmart does it. You can do it.
Well, I don't know that I want to be acquainted with Walmart. Yeah. People are getting more used to that.
One person overseeing it as opposed to.
Yeah. And actually, this self-checkout is very intuitive, and so basically if somebody is, feels comfortable doing that, and they aren't looking for the social interaction, then they can use that. That gives more time for the people who do come to the library for social interaction and want to talk to the people at the desk. So it's just an efficiency choice, and we're excited to see how that helps the load. We found, I mean, we're seeing more and more that things don't slow down for us in the winter. I mean, if you look at the number of average visits a day, even in the winter, we're talking a hundred and forty-six people on average and up to two hundred. And I'm talking October through March. So, you know, we need to make sure that we're managing that load throughout the year. And lastly, well, all right, I'll be very quick. Neighbor to Neighbor, I would imagine you've heard about that organization, the community. It's basically trying to reach out to people who are housebound, also to the elderly who may be feeling like they are not connected to the community. We are actually going to be, we're unofficially partnering with them in that they are going to be providing voluntary service to take books and materials from the library to people who are housebound. That was our solution. We've been looking for a way to do that. Of course, there are liability issues if we were to have volunteers under the auspices of the library, but this will be, we've found a way to have that be completely separate. And I'm really looking forward to that. As soon as they have the volunteers, we'll be starting that. And lastly, we are actually, before summer, or maybe right on the edge of summer, we're going to have what's called a next level area. So we currently have a children's area, and we have a young adult area. What we're finding is the third, fourth graders through the middle school are in the little kids section, and they do not have their own computers. They need to go to the adult computers. So we're creating a section where they will have their own computer stations. So they are, both so they have that available for homework and what have you. By the way, printing of homework, anything school-related is totally free at the library. So we're making sure they have space for that, and they're also comfortable. They're not sitting next to an adult who make, make them feel uncomfortable, what have you. But also, they'll have their own section, so they'll feel, yeah, they're not in the baby section. They're in their own section. So that's very soon. That's this month. That's all I have for it.
That's wonderful.
That's great.
Okay.
What do you have, what do you have as a specific library hurrah or a day or a something that we could, as commissioners or whatever, we could make some kind of a special event?
Oh, I love that. Actually, we just, we just passed one official one, which is in April, there's a library month, library month or what have you, but.
Just think about it. I don't know what we could do, but I think we could have some kind of a, you know, of a function.
That'd be wonderful.
And I'm, I'm looking at this from two ways. One is to highlight the library to the highlight workforce.
Okay, that's great. And I will continue to talk with them. We'll consider how we may be able to do that. But really, the way I'm looking at it is, there's this side, and that's the education of the business owners and also of the, the people who may be going in there. But there's also the workforce side, and they need to be able to say, well, you don't have to make the drive down. Go to the library and you can do this. So lots of pieces need to come together, and we'll do our part.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Good, so quick math.
Yes.
Twenty percent of your visits use your computers, because we have about eight thousand between the public sessions and the Wi-Fi.
Mm-hmm.
And you have a little less than forty thousand visitors.
Yep.
So twenty percent of the visits are, are utilizing computer services.
Our computers are full. Our computers are full, and our seating is full, and we're actually expanding our seating as well. But it's only so much I can tell you in this amount of time, so.
Wonderful.
Put on a second level.
Thank you for a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, our next item of business will be Justin Cole. Is he still out there?
Yes. Good morning, I'm Sam.
Welcome. When you're sick, all right, just stay back there. The way we catch him is when he's sick.
Yeah, sorry about that.
For sure, sir.
Good morning, guys, and thanks for taking the time to hear me out. This is just pretty much an update from the wildlife side of things. Just a few points. Since we've got a new commission, and I think everybody, I know everybody, right? Okay. The first thing is the new access permit at Dewey's. I don't know if you guys have heard about that. Basically, what it is, it's going to be July first is when this is going to go into effect, and it's access permit required for anybody between the ages of eighteen and sixty-four to access the lake unless they have a hunting or fishing license. Okay, you can either have a hunting or fishing license or that access permit to access the lake. It's an annual permit, and it's thirty-six dollars per person. So it's not like a parks pass or anything like that. They'd be able to pick those up anywhere licenses are sold. So they'll print out just like a hunting or fishing license. So that's going to be starting July first. Obviously, this first year will be a education period. You know, we're just going to let folks know it's not going to be a issue citation time. The two exemptions will be Fourth of July. There's no way to enforce that with, you know, the hundreds of people that come that one day. And the other exemption would be those folks that have the recreation right at the lake, those folks in Lake Dewey's Village. Since they have a recreation right, they're exempt. But everybody else between those ages would be required to have that.
And this is set from the state, or how is this?
Yes, it's a regulation, so it just was passed.
And is there anything in the regulation for the active military?
There isn't. One way to get around it is a day license, you know, is only nine dollars. So if someone just wants to go for the day and they don't want to pay the thirty-six, it'd be nine dollars. And really, the whole point behind this, Jumbo Reservoir in the Northeast enacted this several years ago, having a lot of issues with partying and non-wildlife use of that reservoir, because these reservoirs are funded by hunting and fishing licenses. We lease that reservoir from Dewey Stitch and Dye on a yearly basis for about twelve thousand dollars, and the BLM to make it a wildlife area. And what we've seen across the state is a lot of those non-users really creating a detrimental impact to these places and not helping fund that. So that's where.
But if you go out there and you're not on the water, you, you don't need to use permit, is that right?
No, it's just to enter the property.
Pardon?
To enter the property, you'd have to have that or a hunting or fishing license it. So water or land doesn't.
Or land, both of them, okay.
With the money that you're going to get, is there any way you could help with trash disposal? Because we're getting complaints that that area is not being.
I actually have that on the agenda a little later.
But I mean, I'm just wondering if they can provide any support for trash containers?
The downside of this is that money, that it'll be earmarked, but it'll go back to the federal, because basically that, that lease is funded by, it's called the Dingell-Johnson Act, and it's basically tax, excise taxes from boating, supplies, boats, fuel, hunting ammunition, that kind of things. And that's where that money is used to fund that lease. And part of that is we cannot charge. So it's basically just going to go right back to the feds and not go back to the property unfortunately. The only thing it's there for is to try to reduce the amount of non-recreation use out there, you know, partying, those impacts, try to reduce those. So sadly, it's not going to help the funding part of it. We're limited on staff. It's basically me, and we've got one property technician out of Pablo that comes up when he can. He's in charge of all the wildlife areas in Pablo, both north and south side of the reservoir. So he does come up when he can. We try to utilize community.
Service?
Yes.
With the sheriff's?
With the sheriff's office, yeah. So, yeah, those folks, we try to utilize to help out when we can. So we're just short on staff and, and funding for that. But we are aware of those issues. The problem we've come into with trash, you know, we've tried the dumpsters. We've tried that kind of thing. And what comes about is people bring in couches and tires, and those dumpsters fill up immediately. And that's why it is a pack it in, pack it out type place. We've tried that in the past, and it's just got, it's created more of a problem. And we've even tried just doing it on those busy weekends, and then as soon as you remove that dumpster, people just leave their trash where it was. So it's actually, the best case scenario is where we're at now.
Okay.
We've tried it all.
Okay.
Unfortunately. We get construction trash. I mean, a lot of stuff that's not from the lake is what happens. It fills up immediately.
Jay, would you, we'll get down to the mechanics and the cleanup and stuff at our where we are, but Paul and Justin is here. Could you maybe give us a brief synopsis of what we're kind of paying?
Yeah, we've received, Justin, several complaints, and that's just one of several I've received of, what, I'm going to characterize it probably inappropriately, but people driving on the way either to or from the lake, tossing beer bottles and stuff out the window as they drive down. My assumption is it's not people in Custer County, because I know we wouldn't do that. But any rate, so the question came, how do we help the citizens who live along there and all of us who have to put up with the trash? And I met with Sheriff Byerly. The question was, could we use, we have useful public service when someone is convicted of a crime instead of, you know what that is, so they have to sweep floors, whatever. So Sheriff Byerly was excited, liked the idea, and he will, he's working with, I keep pointing towards the court window, because that's where they do it.
Right.
He'll be working with the courts to establish the useful public service to go along and clean that, the road to Lake Dewey's. And he'll most likely use sheriff posse members to kind of oversee it. He said some of them are good enough where they'll just look to see in the trash bag how much they picked up an hour later when they go get them. But most of them he's going to oversee. So we're working towards that at no cost. So that's kind of our plan at that, and you know, it's a shame that it's going into the state coffers, because it'd be nice if it came back some to the county, so the county can help fund the efforts to keep the roads clean. But bureaucracy is bureaucracy. I understand.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's just the way the accounting of that goes with, with that funding of that reservoir. The other thing we can do is, we do have volunteers. And in the past, we've tried to do volunteer day cleanups, especially after those high-volume weekends, you know, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, it's kind of the three big ones, kind of a big cleanup effort after those. So that's something that I can get with our volunteer coordinator out of Springs and put that on the agenda. Some other wildlife areas have done more of a monthly, you know, every month they kind of schedule a volunteer cleanup. What we've run into up here is a low turnout. Just because of where these large volume of volunteers are, is it's kind of out of the way. But. is it's kind of out of the way. But, um, we can sure try it again. And we can try to put on a monthly, if not, you know, at least after those busy, high-volume weekends. So we can work with Jen on that. And like I said, I just got a guy yesterday, community service. He's got 48 hours to spend, and we'll definitely use him. And I tell the court that we'll use all of them.
Wonderful.
Also, the sheriff did mention several years ago about using trustees, you know, if they have inmates that are able to leave the jails, you know, supervise at that point, which is tough, to do that kind of thing as well.
I guess my thought on that would be, I would like you to use your volunteers to keep the lake clean. The area, rather than take siphon help off from there and put them out on a road. I think the road is kind of our responsibility. I mean, but that parenthesis, that's something I think is important.
Yeah, we'll definitely, um, work on. I mean, it's been a non-stop issue out there.
You have a question?
Yes, if I can.
Yes.
Uh, with this new user fee, do you anticipate, given that it's a new thing, quite a high level of non-compliance? And how do you plan to work enforcement?
Absolutely. Um, the first year is always educational, so it's gonna be a lot of, "Hey, folks, this is what's coming. This is new." Um, it's not gonna be writing citations that first year. So it's just like the new, the recreation rights kind of reared its head again, and we had to do that. And it took about two years to really get that word out there and education, so that's what it's about.
Is enforcement just you?
Yes. I mean, the sheriff's department does try to get through there when they can. And I've let Sheriff Byerly know about this new, um, regulation. And really, it's a more of a tool to help us when we do have some issues with folks out there. Because right now, I mean, their only enforcement is you can stay out there 14 days, no fee, no camping. But other than that, we don't have a way to deal with some of the issues that we have with the partying and that kind of thing. So we really want to try to use it that way.
Good luck. Support you.
Thanks. You know, it's, Lake Dewey's is kind of one of those places that we've been trying to work on little by little over time. We had, we've reduced a few of those places to just day use only, because one of the big issues out there is the camping. And every firing creates a trash can, basically. So part of it is reducing some of where that camping goes on, the numbers. And then eventually, we do have some metal fire rings now, um, that we got from a park that closed. And those will be put in eventually on both sides, and that will be the only places that fires will be allowed. To reduce just the mass number of fire rings, and then as that water level recedes, those fire rings, you know, creep down into the lake, and then the trash recedes down there too. So that's gonna be coming, and then also potentially a camp host site, you know. We do have a lot of folks that would love to be camp hosts, but the problem with Dewey's, it's a limited, uh, or primitive. You know, there's no electric water, that kind of thing. And develop one site that does have a power sewer, that kind of thing, just for someone that could be out there through the summer. I have a guy in the winter that actually is out there that helps us, but, uh, nothing that's solid right now. So those are the two things in addition to this access fee to hope improve it. It's just kind of a Frankenstein property. You know, people say, "Why don't you make it a state park?" It's because there's so many entities involved. You know, we don't own anything. You know, fee title, it's all a lease. Ditch Company and BLM is who we leased it from to make it a wildlife area. And then you've got the recreation right issue. We only have the fishing right. So it's a very unique property that's, it's not an easy one to just say, "We'll turn it into a state park" just because there's no ownership, you know.
Well, I know the sheriff says it's one of his biggest headaches.
And, yeah, I mean, we're working on trying to make it less of a headache, for sure. But it's not something that's gonna happen overnight. I think by reducing the volume of campers out there, reducing where those fires occur, the access permit and that camp host, I mean, those are just kind of the big things we're gonna try to do over time to make it better. Utilize volunteers, utilize the community service folks to help on the trash end of things.
What else do you have, Forrest?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, are you coming up on the 13th?
Yes.
Alright.
Yes, I will be there. Uh, the second issue, just to give you guys a heads up, is the deer survival study that we're doing up here. I don't know if you guys have heard about that. It's brand-new this year. We've collared 80 deer. Forty of those are the VHF collars, and forty of those are the GPS collars. It's similar to the survival study they've done north of the river that's been going on for decades. We're now doing it on this side. Um, so we've got all those 80 deer collared. The next step of this is when they fawn, which, beginning of June there, we're gonna try to collar the denionates, the fawns, for one year and see the survival rate of those. It's tied in with the lion study that's going on as well. So that's kind of why we're mirroring the north, because they're doing the lion study north for three years, and then they'll do the same thing on our side for three years. And it's gonna be really good, because in the past, when we manage our deer herds, that's a key component, survival, and we have to use that data from different areas that may not be similar to our, our side. We try to just use those areas that are most similar. But now we'll have the data exactly from our DAU.
And how far do you go north? Somewhere there?
Yes. So we've got 80 deer collared, basically. I think the furthest that way they've done it is like Kirk Gulch, all the way down toward south of Gardner, in the upper Warren.
Glad to see you doing that.
I've seen one with a collar, one hermit. Thought he was somebody's pet.
And that's why I wanted to let you guys know, because folks have started noticing them and calling, and, you know, people thought they've got arrows in them and different things like that. But it is a part of the study, and there are two, um, within town that we've done. One just north and one, um, just kind of west here. And part of that is to try to see if those town deer do move at all. Because that's the other issue with the deer discussion, is I'm working with West Cliff and Silver Cliff on what do we do with these growing number of deer in town, these urban deer that's concerned all over the state right now in a lot of communities. I mean, Canyon City, Libita, Mula, it's everywhere. These deer have come in, we think, after the drought, found pretty good groceries. It's safe, and it's generational, you know, they have fawns, and those fawns have fawns, and they never leave. So it's a growing population. The sheriff's concerned with, you know, vehicle collisions, nuisance calls, hung-in fences. You know, it's a pretty daily thing, injured deer around town. So what do we do to help, um, get a more manageable population in these urban areas?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. I recognize that the two towns have their own issues and hardships and so forth. But is there anything we can do as a county commissioners to support, uh, the activities outside of the city limits? In other words, as an example, and it's almost, it's every day, are the herd, are the, this is the herd you have down here at the bridge of Great Creek. And that's kind of, most of them are on the county side. But it's, I mean, I just routinely slow down at night, because there's gonna be something in the road. And the same thing, uh, you know, out on the other edges of town. So is there something we can do as a county to help support you or something to? And I, I've heard that we have maybe 152 hundred deer in this area. Would that be a reasonable estimate?
Between 100 and 200. I did a count, um, actually Sunday after that storm when all the deer were everywhere, and I did count 110, you know, around Silver Cliff and West Cliff. Majority were on the West, or Silver Cliff side. What I've started with Darryl Drew, probably at least three, four years now, I give him 10 doe tags, um, every year. Since he's just outside the city limits, it's kind of out of that city deal, and he harvests 10 deer every, 10 does every year. And I've noticed that herd, I mean, it's down to 22. And it's, you know, it does kind of go up and down depending on the time of year, but it has helped reduce that bunch there. So that's kind of how I'm working with Silver Cliff. They've got the opportunity with some of that big open country where you can do some harvest safely. Um, and that's kind of the direction we're going. We are gonna have, they're gonna have a public meeting, uh, early June for the community to get their input on, on how, you know. Usually on these things are very emotional. It's usually 50% love the deer, 50% would like to see them reduced. Something that's very difficult, but that's really the only thing that's been, the most feasible option is you get harvest where you can do it safely.
I know, I've counted over 200 head between Dakota Pexy Cut Off and Dakota Pexy.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's just, uh, from a range standpoint, I mean, that habitat has to be struggling in some of those areas with the number of deer that we've got.
Habitat is one of the issues. I mean, it's not great, you know, and that's a lot of the reason some of these deer are coming to town.
John, you had a question?
Um, two things. One, are there trash bags available to any of the community members that want to volunteer to go out and pick up trash?
I can sure provide them. You bet.
Where, where would you get them? Where would someone get them?
I would have to get them from Pablo, and then, um, I can give you my number, and then just call me. And I could sure give out as many as I can.
And would they just leave them out there to be picked up?
Well, I would think, John, from a, if it's, if it's carry-it-in, carry-it-out policy, that you take your own trash bags with you to carry it out.
He's asking about volunteering to pick up trash.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hit the volunteer part.
I would call me immediately, because what we've found is if a trash bag shows up out there, 10 others will show up there. As people leave, they say, "Oh," and it is, it's sad, and you've got a mountain in a day, so. If we're gonna do that, you know, I would say, you know, either call me, or if you know where you're gonna be out there, and I'll just come grab them from you, just so they're not sitting there.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Forrest?
Um, I didn't know how much time you had. The one last thing I had was a, just to see what the county commissioners thought about an access point. There's a big chunk of BLM, that Tyndale Gulch area, and that big piece of BLM. And the county, that's an old county road that used to go up through that canyon that's abandoned. It was closed several years ago. And I was just wondering about the feasibility of just having a public access along that county road until it gets to that BLM, and having a foot-or-horseback access point from there to have the public access that BLM on Tyndale Mountain.
And that used to be a state highway?
Yes.
And then when they put it through the hill, and it was a county road, and they closed it, and I, uh... I understand, and I'm just second-hand, but I understand there's part of that area that's been kind of eroded and stuff for, so that from a vehicle standpoint, it wouldn't be safe. Is that a fair statement?
I have not been in there to look at it. I know that folks are using it anyway right now to access that. And I've just, I haven't gone through there to see how, how that road is.
And I don't know if that road is still on our, I think that road may have been abandoned.
From what I understand, it has.
It has, or has not?
Has. The county, I mean, you don't maintain anymore. It used to go from one end to the other, and the maintenance was such a problem that, that's why I think why the county abandoned it. But it'd be a short piece from the highway to that BLM.
Does that bridge, does the county still own the land, or did it go, was it just an easement we had and it went back to the property owner? If we abandoned it, that would be the first question.
I suspect it was probably just an easement. I'm not aware of any of those roads around Crete that we own. Uh, we may, we can check and see, but I think it was, that road was put in 1890s, probably.
Yeah, I mean, it was the old highway. And I did talk to JD, and he thinks it's still county right-of-way.
Okay.
To that point, and it's, if I remember right, looking at the map, it's, you know, a half a mile, quarter mile stretch just to get to where.
The county still has some kind of legal interest in the land, and it's, something that would be feasible.
We'll check in. You go ahead.
I was gonna ask, Mr. Chairman, if, I'm not familiar with the road, and I, I'd like to see it on the map, so can I?
Do you know where those little sawmillings alongside 96, where they're having the sale?
Okay, yes.
Okay, it goes from there, right straight south.
That's fine. I'd like to see it on a map, and I'd like to talk to, um, I'd like to have, um, Gary Hyde involved.
Well, I'll take care of that from the road side.
I understand, but I'd like to have more discussion, maybe an agenda item. I think it's a reasonable request, and let's take a look at it.
I would like to clarify a little more now. Is that bridge on BLM, or is that on private?
I'd have to actually go with my GPS.
But we're pretty close to that bridge, isn't it, where that BLM comes across?
Yep, it's not very far.
And that, we're mostly looking at the area to the west side of the road as BLM.
Correct.
Because all that on the east side, I think, is private.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, I've got this map, but it doesn't show the detail. And it was more of just, I didn't know how much time I'd have, and I just wanted to see, kind of feel the waters, test the waters. You guys are kind of the first step, and then it'd be BLM, and if it could even be done. It's just another access point for the public, and not roads or anything, just be foot-or-horseback, just a small park.
I agree with you, we need to look at it, but I think, now having, knowing it like the back of my hand.
No, you do.
As a matter of fact, I, one time I shot a deer, just as he jumped the fence near the bridge, and I chased him all the way down that damn Tyndale Gulch. And whereas we could drive to it and load him, otherwise we'd had a drug he'd have on. So I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, and it's a great, I mean, it's full of wildlife, turkey, deer, bear, I mean, it's, but it's landlocked at this point, really. Aside from the folks that are trying to get in there.
Sounds very reasonable. Let's discuss it, and let's see if we can get it done.
And you're asking specifically for foot and horse access?
Right. Well, it'd be drive from the highway along that county right-of-way to the BLM. And at the BLM, that's where the parking area would be for the foot-or-horseback access.
And would the BLM develop a parking area then?
That's where the next step would come. I mean, you guys are kind of the first step, if it's even possible. And then I'd work with them and see, yeah, if we could do that. I know they've done a lot of timber work in there. So they, they're accessing it.
Because I think that's something that we, we don't sure want to place on the other end for them to put it. And I don't want them parking right there on the corner of the highway, because there's not a whole lot of space down there.
No, and I don't think you could, because it's just that county road is all the room that you'd have till you get to the BLM.
We'll just revisit it, don't we have enough information?
Okay, and anything you need from me, if I need to do some lake work on it, I sure can. I'll try to do some more research.
Thank you.
Okay, guys. Thank you, guys. Yeah, me too. Thanks for your time.
Justin, I want to thank you for all that you do as wildlife officer for the county.
You bet.
I think we have, as an example, the Dewey's, Lake Dewey's, I think, is, uh, what it was 50 years ago, there's no comparison, so it has a fishery.
Thank you.
It has really come on in my mind. Uh, I also look at where we are in terms of our wildlife management, to the point that I think we need more predators than we've got, but...
And that's hopefully, we'll, we'll learn a lot more with this lion study and deer study both, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You bet. Thanks for your time.
Take care. Hope you get those.
All right, can we?
Yesterday? So not a good wildlife fence.
Underfunded courthouse, do you anticipate that being very long?
I don't think so.
I'm up with your, we're running a little behind, Tim. And did you have something else, Forrest, Alice?
Uh, I haven't.
He's got a stamp.
Record.
Yeah, he's on the agenda.
Okay, well, maybe we need to jump down and take care of these two reports so they can go home. Come on up, Alice.
Okay. You're not sick, are you? Uh, no, I'm not sick, I'm just...
Wait, wait, wait.
Just getting old.
We didn't define what sick is. No, I meant, I meant sneezing, whatever. Don't take that the wrong way.
I know where you were. Well, first piece of information is that I could not email the report to Brenda.
I got it.
Or, you don't have this?
No.
My broadband's been, was down for over a week, and when I went to use my computer, it's broke. And my printer, as you can see, is on the fritz. So I'm gonna have to use Amy Walton's wifi at the library, and that's only 20 miles to drive.
But you yourself are doing better.
My, I'm getting over the surgery pretty well.
You got a little bit of good news in your reporting.
Uh, well, it's, uh, it's factual. There we go. Uh, yeah, it's quick and easy. We had our monthly meeting on April 20, 20th, four members were present. One was in the hospital, and one was stuck in Delta with a broken truck, so that accounts for the six of us. Uh, Bill Geickel was there again. He's beginning to be a kind of a, uh, monthly fixture at our meetings. Uh, we approved the minutes from March 16th, uh, on the, the fuel report. Uh, in April, we sold 116 gallons, so we still have 13, 14 in the tank. The last fuel price, uh, was 353, you saw it. Uh, the last fuel price, uh, was three fifty-three, you saw it. The price of fuel is not following price of oil like it has in the past. Uh, it's been floating around that three fifty-three to three twenty-three price for almost six months now. Uh, the Sayweather system, uh, it arrived May nineteenth on Wednesday and we installed it on Friday, the twenty-first. It's all operational, works like a champ.
Said I can't be May nineteenth. You've got nay nineteenth. We're not there yet.
Oh, see? That's gotta be April. I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
But anyway, it's, uh, it's up and running. Uh, we've had several pilots use it so far. Uh, one pilot claims he couldn't get it to activate, but he was on the wrong frequency.
But he did have the right airport?
Well, he landed there. I won't name names, hell. Uh, the bid for the new fuel dispenser was approved this morning. It's great. We'll get that scheduled and, uh, get it, get it done. And I'm hoping to have that done by the twenty-fourth of this month. And, uh, okay, the, the line you can't hardly read says, uh, fly in. Alan Butler is the chairman of that committee and Bob Jolly's the co-chair. And Bob Custer is standing by to help. Uh, it's gonna be in September. I will not be here in September. We're leaving, uh, the latter part of August, won't be back till mid-October. So you, you'll be free from me.
Can you fly in?
I don't fly. I could fly out.
You got lots of friends that will pick you up, bring you down, take you back.
I've got, I've had lots of, of offers to fly me here and there. Uh, during our meeting, we discussed some work to be done this summer. Uh, we got some signs we need to be put up and weed mowing as usual. Uh, there's a couple of small pieces of fence that need to be repaired.
And you guys do that though?
Will do that, yeah. It's, it's just minor stuff. We're still, uh, physically able for some of that, so.
What about, um, the general cleaning inside? How's that going?
Uh, it's about the same as it's been. Uh, Dave does a pretty good job.
Okay.
Anything else? Uh, and, uh, we've, we've been discussing improving the coffee bar area there in the, in the O M S building. There by the, uh, uh, the, the big, big meeting room. You know, there's a, there's a counter there and, uh, uh, we want to improve that. It's already plumbed and there's electricity there for a refrigerator, microwave, what have you. It's plumbed for, uh, water. So we're looking into how to put in some cabinets, put in a sink, get it plumbed up. Uh, the refrigerator, we've already got a microwave. And just to make, uh, make things a little more inviting to transit pilots as they come through. And we'll, we'll be working about, working on that as time goes by, so.
Are your cameras still being used on the runway?
Yes and no. We haven't caught up with, uh, getting the pictures off the chips because Jack is the only one that knows how. I, I cannot grasp it in my head how to, how to get it. Uh, and he's two chips behind because he's only been in the county seven days totaled it for the last month and a half. He, he's got lots of, uh, outside interests going.
Knowledge needs to get shared, it sounds like.
But, uh, I, yeah, I submitted, uh, uh, for January and February. We only had eleven, uh, flight, uh, items or incidents on the camera uh, in January and February. Thanks to our weather. But yeah, it's, it's still, it's still working. Uh, we're just kind of behind on.
Well, we are recording, so we do have a record.
Yes, yes, we are recording.
Okay, and you signed up for that seminar?
Uh, not yet. Uh, I was talking to, uh,
Dave?
Dave and, uh, well, I don't want to say it on.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm going to it.
Okay. I just need to know if I need to follow up with Dave? Do I need to follow up with Dave? Thank you.
You're welcome. And we adjourned at eleven forty and, uh, it's almost at now, so.
Let's see, we've got thirteen hundred gallons left. So you would probably be looking at maybe a June or July fuel run?
Uh, if, if we improved our fuel sales to, uh, a mean average of about three hundred and eighty gallons per month. Cause during the summertime, that's kind of an average. Uh, so if we, uh, if we came close to three hundred, say, uh, for this month, May, and we probably push almost four hundred in June, that's still only seven hundred gallons.
We're getting down to probably in the July range.
July to August, maybe. Uh, depends on, on, uh, activity, yeah. And as soon, as soon as the pilot community find out we have a new fuel dispenser, they'll rush right up here to use it, break it in.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
For all that you do, Forrest. Thank the board too.
There you go. Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna jump ahead and have Tim right now, your waiting horse.
Is there any money, Tim?
You doing? You doing? You doing? You doing? All right. Well, I keep it pretty short today for you. You guys are busy, so, um, the monthly report. April was an interesting month. Between weather and being gone for a week for the conference, I feel like I've been in scramble mode all month, so. But we closed out pretty, pretty good. Sixty-two office visits, uh, for the month. And then the other thing was, uh, attached to that is the, uh, database update of three sixty-two. So it continues to grow. Uh, it's about eight, we had eight new vets into the system this last month, so. So we're, we're still averaging between seven to twelve a month. It's just a constant, constant growth on that, so. Health fare, I thought the health fare were real well. And Roger came from, from Lawsonburg, so that was great. So that was very helpful. We, I, we probably generated five or six new appointments off of that one event, which is always good. And, and then the other thing that happened is a lot of people came by who weren't veterans, who said, oh, my neighbor's vet and so forth. So we actually give out a lot of business cards to people who know vets and that's, yeah, it's a good thing. So word of mouth, so. Especially, I, I still know that we, we barely scratched the surface. Um, you know, and you know it's the other side, mostly in Fremont County, but that Cota Paxi, Texas Creek area, there's a lot of isolated vets down there. And when they do ask for help, they come here. So that's still an area that's a lot of growth, a lot of vets down there. State, state training conference, uh, is good. Uh, it's a, it's a required thing. They had a few good speakers from the V A regional office. Uh, they had the pension folks come down from Minneapolis. So probably one of the best things about that conference though is a chance for me to spend some time with other V S Os who have been doing this longer than I have. There's a couple, uh, El Paso, Denver, Appahoe County, Jefferson County. So vets who are dealing with a lot of, a lot more numbers than I am, so. Uh, they have a variety of different experiences of cases that I, I don't see very often, so. I'm able to balance those ideas and strategies off of other experienced V S Os, so very advantageous for that. Of course, the only downside is it wasn't up in the Denver area, so you have to spend five days up in Denver, so. But it was, it was good overall. I came back on the Friday, twenty-first, turned around on Monday, had to go back to Denver for a B V A hearing. We have a vet eighty-four years old who had an appeals hearing that we got, we were able to get expedited. So we're up for that. We should hear in probably six months, uh, the results of that, so. And then, um, one of the things I brought today, if you look all the way up on your handout, the last couple pages, uh, just wanna make you aware, I'm not sure, I don't think I had mentioned this last year, but, um, the V A does issue a, what's called a G D X report. It's a geographic distribution of expenditures and by state and then it's broken down by county. And so it might be an interesting thing for you to see that it actually, they do track how much money is being spent, uh, here for vets in this county. So if you look at Custer County, um, the V A's reporting five hundred and twenty-two vets in the system, which is, these numbers, you have to keep in mind, these are only showing up vets who are in the V A system for something. Either they're using the healthcare, they're getting compensation or pension, uh, use the home loan program or GI bill or something. Um, so they're showing five hundred and twenty-two. My, my guess, I mean, that's probably about half of what's actually here in Custer County. Um, it's amazing. I have quite a few this last year, um, Vietnam vets, even Korean War vets or two vets who have never, ever used the V A for anything. So, so that just gives you an idea. Plus the other impact is, is by county, by county. So like I said, Cota Paxi, Texas Creek area, um, we'll never see the benefit as far as statistics go and the reporting of what we do here. But this is where they're gonna come. It's just much easier for them to come here, okay? So anyways, uh, we see the, the number of total expenditures, uh, that's actually four million, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. Okay, so it's in millions.
Okay.
Yep, it's four million, eight, eight forty. The next line over is probably the one that really impacts the county more because, uh, comp and pen, that's your compensation and pension money. That's coming, that's paychecks coming directly to the vet that they're spending here. That's two point eight million dollars. And this is fiscal year fifteen. Uh, we don't have last years yet. Usually this comes out, well, summer, July, August timeframe is when it gets released. So then we'll have fiscal year there. Uh, then if you go all the way to the right, you see at one ninety-nine, unique patients. And medical, medical care was one point seven million dollars spent on behalf of veterans here in Custer County. The vast majority of that is at the V A clinics. Uh, but then, uh, the clinic here is, is choice approved. Choice has had, been seeing any news, it's been a disaster, but they're working on it. Uh, it was just extended. Uh, there's still nine hundred and some million dollars in the account. It was set to expire, uh, in August, so they've extended it until they get some more legislation passed to try and approve that program. Uh, if they do work the kinks out, if they ever get that program running and make it simple, I think the clinic here will benefit by that because they will pick up a lot more vets.
You lost. Where does this one point eight mean?
Uh, all the way to the right. Okay, you see where it says one ninety-nine?
One ninety-nine, yeah.
The column to the left of that says one, one thousand, seven forty. That's actually almost one point seven million. That was, that was expenditures for healthcare benefits, okay? So, um, I think that a lot of, a lot of vets have stopped using Choice because it's such a frustrating process. I experienced myself with my, my dad and, uh, and so a lot of vets have given up on it. But, uh, there's a lot of interest in it and if we get the kinks worked out, I think that, that would be something where the clinic would benefit. And they would pick up a lot of appointments from that, okay?
What was the building in Denver? Half a million dollars? And here? I see we have construction on here and there's just one or two places that have been repaired.
Well, that's probably a new hospital they're building up in Aurora, I would think. I haven't, I haven't looked much at the Denver area stats.
Normally they don't, normally they don't make buildings and these buildings, do they?
No, no. It, it has, it has to be a construction project that's been approved. Uh, the hospital up in Aurora, which is a huge, huge, like seven billion. They've actually started moving some clinics in there. So they're at ninety percent completion. So they're about one point five billion dollars over budget.
That's where the Nantucket Center is.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah, so, um, but it's, it, they say it's gonna be the, the model for all future, you know, high-tech stuff there, so. But, uh, yeah, they're, they're projecting in January of eighteen to be fully open. That's their projection right now.
Excellent.
I just wanna add, because I know you brought it to our attention a couple of months ago, uh, regarding, uh, a review. And we are in process of working on all of the policies, so you're not forgotten. It's just taken a while to get there.
Yeah, and timing's always interesting. Um, last month, you asked a question about the state and funding. At the state conference, it's nothing that's been approved yet, but just, it's out there. They have, the, the formula they use determine that, that, that amount that comes into the county is based upon, uh, for full-time, working at least thirty-five hours a week and eight dollars an hour is the math that they use. They've, they're recommending that that be bumped up to twelve dollar an hour for computation. Which on that math would, would translate to about three thousand dollar a year increase from state funding. So it's in the proposal, it's in the budget being at the state level right now and they'll, they'll know in June, July.
So once the state budget's approved, we'll have an idea of where we are.
We have an idea if it's gonna be increased or not, so, so that, that was mentioned, so. Uh, as you know, the state's on that July through June budget, so. So it was interesting.
So that's July one.
Well, I really have a question on, we look at twenty-four, twenty-fourteen, they said we had five hundred and twenty-six vets. Uh, five twenty-two and fifteen.
It's gonna fluctuate.
You know, we, we haven't had people dropping out. We've been adding to it, but the fourteen was before you come on board.
Right, and fifteen, I really.
Fifteen, you were just getting started.
Just getting started, yeah. And, and, and keep in mind, uh, we've had a lot of funerals here.
Yeah.
We've had a lot of funerals here this last year and a half, uh, just in the last month alone, uh. So, uh, and then, and the other thing that picks that, impacts that also is moving. That's why I'm curious to see, probably August, we'll get the fiscal year sixteen, be interesting to see.
Okay, I've got, I won't say that, so I'd like to see what, if it should increase.
Yeah, and the other thing is, is, uh, and I'll give you a good example of, there's always gonna be this lag. I just got notified today. I was, went to V A system this morning. Uh, I had a Vietnam vet who we put his application, we start working on his application for his hearing loss due to service connection. Uh, we didn't intend to file in September of fifteen. And it took a while to get all documentation together and he just, as of today, matter of fact, the letter was dated today in the V A system that he was approved for his hearing retro back to September of twenty fifteen. So this gives you an idea also of the lag time, um, of, of the processing. And that was just for one, it's a simple hearing disability exam and it took us that long to, to get that through. So, um, so at some point then those will show up and all of a sudden you'll see a bump, uh, you know, in a certain fiscal year, but that work actually started almost eighteen months ago, so.
When you went to your state conference, are they talking about adding people to help all over?
No, it's up to the counties. It's up to individual counties to determine their need to evaluate and come up with, you know, the state. It really doesn't have any impact on that side of it, uh, as far as at the county level.
They provide one and we provide the rest.
Yep, pretty much, pretty much. Um, and, 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 and just to give you an idea also, something that, um, I haven't mentioned before, but the state, uh, software program we use, the state, it's five hundred some dollars a year and the state pays for that. They pay for one user per county, so if you, so if the county grows and at some point, uh, nail down the road, we got fifty, twenty thousand people here or some, and, uh, if you just add a V S O, then the county will have to pick, you know, have those users. But I don't see that happening anytime soon. But, uh, like everything else, the software prices keep going up also. But that's about five hundred some dollars a year the state is paying also, uh, that the benefit, benefit of the county, so. But yeah, it's, it's, if you look at the, the law that covers this job, it's kinda interesting. County employee, you're kinda like a hybrid, you're kinda in the middle between the state and the county. But, uh, the law's clear that it is a county employee position mandated by the state, yeah, type of thing, so. So, um, they, they allow the, the county to assess their needs and what they believe. And that's where it becomes important for whoever's in this position to make sure that they're then educated and letting you know what the needs are. And that's, that's really a big part of the puzzle, I think.
Okay, thank you.
And last thing, real quick, paying a view, I won't be there unless my, my dad's been kinda on this roller coaster health-wise, so. So last week I was thinking, oh, I'm probably not gonna be, I'll probably be here, then this week he's doing well again and we're probably gonna go, so. But I talked to Roger, and I've ordered last minutes to Roger down in Walsenburg, he's definitely going to be here.
We have a meeting on, or this Thursday?
Yeah, and I've got that on my schedule to make that meeting, uh, looking forward to that, Roger will be here, Roger, if you get a chance to talk to him, um, he came back from Vietnam, Vietnam vet, and then almost immediately got involved in this type of work. So he is a walking encyclopedia in VA benefits, he's a social director for a veterans home down there in Walsenburg, he will be here, have a booth to about the veterans home, and he will have a bunch of my, my cards, encourage vets to come see me, so.
Okay, anything else on your report?
Nope, that's it.
Do you have any questions?
Good, thank you for a great job.
Do I hear a motion to approve the April 2017 Military and Veterans Affairs Report?
Make the motion to approve that report as stated by our VSA.
Second? I'll second it, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And before I go, I want to tell you thanks again, uh, Saturday was Anna's day and her party.
How did that go?
You know what, we were a little concerned, 11:30, we had about seven people because of the weather, we ended up with over 50 people showing up, and so we did the presentation, and, uh, went real well, plus the auction, we raised about $1,000 to help her with her moving expenses, honey auction, so, so it was a good day.
Where do I sign here?
Right here.
Right by my name?
Yep. Above, aside, or anywhere in the landscape.
Okay.
All right.
You're signed, and you can make your report, and thank you for your reference.
Thanks, sir.
Take care, bud. Okay, we'll move back. I would like to have a, I will declare a seven-minute recess for the comfort, and we will reconvene at 11 o'clock. Is that what you're wanting? I wonder why you're pulling my shirt sleeve? Reconvene. At this time, I'll call the Florida County Commissioners Meeting back to order. As soon as I can find what I did with my agenda, here we are. The next item on the agenda will be the underfunded courthouse.
I guess, I don't know, Brenda, were you able to reach Lisa? Because I haven't seen any updates.
I have.
I'd ask to put this on, I think we have a couple of things we need to think about, and one of them is, do we want to try to have a, a firm estimate what it would cost for a, uh, new justice facility? We already have a feeling where we are here, uh, and if we decide to, who are we going to use? And we already had three firms that brought us some stuff, and I feel comfortable with perhaps using one of those. I've talked to some of the folks in the community, and, uh, I've yet to hear anyone tell me they didn't think it was a good idea. I'm concerned about financing, about half that financing will come from the underfunded courthouse people. Dole has promised to participate for about a quarter, we just have to see where we're going, I think the first step is to decide if we want to try to, to get a second evaluation of the facility, and then we'll sit down and crunch some numbers and, and kind of see where it makes sense. Now, whatever comments, I would welcome from, from either of you.
I'm all in favor of moving forward with, um, preliminary discussions, estimates, those kind of things. Certainly makes sense, uh, retrofitting two buildings that are in deplorable condition as opposed to having something more practical certainly makes sense if we can afford it.
I would agree with those comments, um, we have a lot of things that are going to be on the table, a lot of expenses, and I think it's important for our taxpayers to see what we're dealing with, so I would agree, and, uh, moving forward also.
I guess what I would like to do, we had asked, with this $140,000 we had, was for more or less a blueprint, preliminaries of stuff for, uh, I suggest here, we want to maybe would consider two things, on the first step, would we have them do us, have them do a, a report on the cost of it, kind of like they did on the remodel, and then the second part would be then, okay, we want to go on, do the best you can with what you provide, especially for whichever way we decide to go in terms of planning documents.
I mean, we would have to sit back and discuss what that building is going to include.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, that's, just like we did this here.
But you're saying to use that 140 to move forward?
I would, I'm suggesting we look at that in two, in two sections, one of them is to have them, as soon as we can, what we select, have them give us a report very similar to the report they generated on the remodel, some ideas and generalizations, and then, and then we can look at that, and then if we, which, you know, then we got to make that decision, maybe we use some more of this money then to, to start the initial planning on whichever direction we go.
I guess I just want to make sure we're okay in using the funds that way, and I don't know.
That's my guess.
Who has this sale on that with Lisa?
Yeah. You want to check with her, or me too?
I can check with her.
Let's see, Clint, we opened those bids, and we looked at them, reviewed them, I guess if we wanted to take action and select a firm, we would be appropriate at this time, would that be fair?
We could do it, yes.
Do either of you have any thoughts or comments on, uh, on an underfunded courthouse firm for generating the studies?
I do, I just want to get the proper name.
This is scope, the scope of the money that we received, was it limited to retrofitting this building, or can those funds be used for, um, determining if, uh, a new building is appropriate?
I don't think that's, it's not limited just to retrofitting this, I don't think.
Okay.
We've, we've talked about it, we're exploring options, and that was to continue with our options.
I, I just want to check with Lisa Rowe, that's who we met with to make sure that that money can be spent that way, I know that, I think we had a timetable of October or September this year coming up.
That we have to for, to, uh, apply for more funding, and I think this is why we need to move somewhat expeditiously on, on selecting a firm and, and deciding where we're going and get something started to roll.
Can I recommend before we, in lieu of taking, excuse me, taking a vote at this moment, just confirm with Ms. Rowe that it is acceptable to do what we're doing, and then go ahead and move forward on that, so we could do it, I mean, maybe the next meeting, we could add it to the agenda if you can get the answer.
I don't know that I can get that done by tomorrow morning.
I didn't mean tomorrow.
Okay, well, that's the next meeting.
I'm sorry, the meeting after next, or in the very near future.
Well, whichever way we go, we have to select a firm. If we continue with just the remodel, we have to select a firm, or if we do something different, so.
I would like to suggest, uh, from Wel Squire, uh, I think that that firm, uh, offered a lot, brought a lot to the table, especially if we are able to move ahead, uh, after speaking with him one-on-one, uh, they would become part of our campaign efforts, and, uh, to me, they just felt like they would be more, uh, a part of our community in helping to make this a successful project in the end, that's my recommendation.
I concur with what you're saying.
That is Anderson-Hallis Architects.
Would it be appropriately selected a firm, and, and said either this or this, depending on Lisa, and if she says we can go ahead, we can move with it? Would that be possible?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, you know, as long as it's qualified, that she's an approval.
Right, so then I would like to make the motion to move forward with the Anderson-Hallis Architect Firm on the project.
I'll second that motion.
I move, no second, to select, um, Anderson and, and, House.
Anderson-Hallis Architects.
Firm as our architect, whichever way we go, uh, is there any other discussion? All in favor? Yes, John?
Two things, one, are y'all looking at bids online or something?
Pardon me?
Are y'all looking at bids online?
Bids online? No.
We've received bids, and they have them on our computers.
We received bids in Oldham two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
You weren't here then, but we, we've already been through all of that process.
The other thing, one of the things, is the sheriff's office an option to be discussed in future dates? The remodeling of the sheriff's office, is that an option?
It is, but it's additional monies. And we can get, appears that if we decided to go with the, with the Justice Center, and we looked at this, and oh my God, do we need one, well, if we look around us, a lot of the counties have gone that way, Fremont being the closest one, but, uh, as we've looked at our remodeling, John, all we're going to do is meet today's needs, nothing for tomorrow. And, uh, you're, you're familiar with the jail facility over there, we've got some stuff we need to look at there, it comes down, do we put on Band-Aids and keep on Band-Aiding, or do we back off, and the, the point that I go back to, and I will vigorously defend, is that our predecessors in 1923, or whenever it was, built this building, and it lasted with really no changes until into the 50s, it was a 25-year window, and then we did some changing and stuff, and that lasted into the 70s, and a little more, so each time we've made a step historically in a building, we've been able to acquire about 25 years more of service, so, uh, as we look at things, that's one of the things that I, that I am looking at. Okay, any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for the vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign.
Boy, I didn't know you've got Human Services at 11 o'clock, I don't know if you want to.
She, she'll usually, I'll just call her sometime, whatever.
I'm not done with this one yet.
Okay, oh, sorry.
Do we need to also then say that, that, um, something to the fact that if approved by, by the underfunded courthouse project, that we will then seek to utilize these funds for the exploration of a judicial center? Would that be appropriate?
That's what we thought.
Yeah, yeah, I thought that's where we were.
That's kind of what I thought we did.
Well, no, on our motion, we just selected the, the firm, we didn't get into what our next step was going to be yet.
Qualified the motion to say, based upon what?
What we, what we find out from Lisa.
Right, and if she says it's okay to use for Justice Center, then we were going to let them go loose on looking at Justice, including what John's bringing up, having, you know, sheriff's office included.
Is that what you, is that what you said in your motion? She said that we would do it, I thought she just said.
According, according to what Lisa, what she found out from Lisa.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we're fine then, good, now, we'll go ahead. Human Services, she, we only just call her sometimes, so, I think we're all right in going on a little bit.
Sure.
The next item we have on business is a closure of the South Harts Scrabble Road, and we've already taken care of this. The next item is the courthouse closure procedures.
Okay.
Donna, do you have?
I met with Donna yesterday, and we took into consideration the points that were discussed on the 28th last Friday, so what you have in front of you is a revised procedure, so I guess I just need to hear your comments on what the revisions were.
I like it, that's my comment.
I can't fight it, is my comment. That's this one right here, this is the, the latest, oh, I'm looking for something blue on.
So we revised item number one, we changed the date to 6:00 AM. You wanted, uh, taken out, uh, the listed entities, and we made it general, okay, in that sentence?
Chairman or vice chairman, depending on availability, will confer with any or all entities or officials to determine the scope and, I like that.
The version before this listed out the sheriff's state office extent, okay, so then, uh, we also changed number four, so we added that we will have ready-made signs so that, uh, someone from the sheriff's department could post those on the building if need be. And what was also changed was how the top reads, Jay, so you were concerned about the announcement.
I like the way you did it.
So it's this very top, uh, because two commissioners would be, uh, meeting outside of normal meeting, we changed that to read, the Board of County Commissioners are the authority to announce such a closure with a decision being made outside.
I don't have the draft that you have. This is the one that's, was the previous.
That's the old one.
That's the old one.
Right.
There you go.
I concur.
So those were the three changes that were addressed.
Okay, uh, I think probably I should read this into the minutes, and then we can take action on it. What we are, folks, is that very seldom do we have to close a courthouse, but we really don't have a defined protocol spelled out who's going to take which steps, and we feel it's important that we at least have this down, so all our elected officials and department heads know what the protocol, protocol is going to be and where we're going. So I'm going to read this into the record, Custer County Emergency Facility Closure Policy Procedure. The county rarely closes due to adverse weather conditions or other events. In the event of an extreme weather situation or a catastrophic event, it may be necessary to close county facilities. The Board of County Commissioners are the authority to announce such a closure with a decision being made outside of a meeting of record. Number one, before 6:00 AM, the Board of County Commissioner Chairman or Vice Chairman, depending on the availability, will confer with any and all entities or officials to determine the scope and the extent of the emergency. Two, if a determination is made to close the facilities, the OEM Director will be notified to use their resources to make public notification of the closure, that's Office Emergency Management. Number three, the BOCC will then notify all department heads and county elected officials of the closure after 6:00 AM. It will then be the responsibility of apartment heads and or elected officials to notify their staff. Number four, the BOC will then make sure that the closure is posted with ready-made signs at all entrances to the facility, to the closed facilities if and when the event allows. Any extension of the closure will follow the same procedure for notification with initial contact by BOCC prior to 7:00 AM on the day preceding the closure extension, on the day, wait a minute. Any extension of the closure will follow the same procedure for notification, initial contact by the BOCC, but we wouldn't do this on the day preceding the extension.
7:00 PM.
It is.
Yeah.
The night, the night before will decide whether we continue.
Oh, okay, okay, oh, I'm sorry, PM, I'm sorry. Okay, then, uh, a 7:00 PM of the day preceding the closure extension. The policy procedure approved and accepted on this blank day a blank for the Board of County Commissioners. Do I have a motion to accept this policy?
I would make a motion to accept the policy as read.
I'll second it, discussion?
Yes, just grammatical on number two, I think I should say, if a determination is made to close the facility, the OEM Director, that'd be an individual person, will be notified to use, instead of their resources, it should be its resources to make public notification, it's just grammar, uh, it doesn't matter, we know what we're saying.
The director.
The director's a person, and if we say their resources, you're referring to more than one person. It's just grammar. Change their to its, and we're fine.
I just also want you to know that this will be in the appendix and section of the policy manual, so it'll be stated as part of the policy.
Was there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Can I make a comment if I may?
Please.
I would like somewhere or someone to make a list of all of the notice, who will receive the notices and phone numbers and alternate phone numbers, including both of your notifications, just in case, for example, Donna, if you're not available, either Bob and I could, will know who to call for you.
Want the, the phone chain?
That's what I would...
That's, yep.
Who's responsible for whom, but I'd like all of them, just in case one of the two of you are not available.
I think we need to, logical place for me to think about doing that, Jay, would be, Friday, when you have a workshop with OEM?
That's fine. That's fine.
Because she's the one that triggers it and, and have that. Please help me remember to get that, get that on the schedule first. All right, any other comments? Yes, sir.
It's gonna be interesting if you really have a true urgency, if there's no phones or whatever.
The commissioners will have radios.
We have radios.
Oh, okay.
And the radios aren't backup power. No, and see, this happened when we didn't have any electricity.
Yeah.
And, and this is what, you know, we basically had a, a, a policy in place, but we hadn't really defined it. Now, I have, the radio I have, I keep in touch with Roden Bridge on a daily basis. Know where they are, what they're doing, and, and when they go out in the morning, they're out early to see how bad it is. So it'll be on our radio with Roden Bridge, and when we got a foot of snow here, we got three feet of snow here, it's blowing here.
I've got a radio too, but I can't talk on it.
No, but John, uh, the sheriff's department is open 24/7 and they agreed to post a sign on the courthouse.
Well, if you can't get your, the signs are gonna do it anyway.
But at least, at least it's posted.
All right, let's move on to the high-speed internet.
Okay, well, I pretty much covered this earlier in my commissioners' report, so I have nothing further to report at this time.
Let's go to the weed control.
So I believe we were all copied on an agreement from, uh, the county of Fremont, state of Colorado. I guess there's been an agreement, uh, between the two counties and don't know whether you've had a chance to review that.
Their, their weed person comes up and sprays. I think we need to maybe look at this at our next meeting, depending what we're doing in the interim.
Okay.
I think we have time. We're not gonna be initiating any immediate, um, control. At least, I don't think we will in the next two weeks. Uh, what we talked about as a county, as a Roden Bridge, in the past, we've had this fellow come up and, and spray all of our county rightways. Uh, Gary seems to think we've got the expertise and he thinks one guy, I already have all the licensing necessary so we can spray our own weeds. And in the past, we've only tried to control the weeds once or twice a year. And the policy that I'm pushing for is that we control them on a monthly basis. Keep the word size mowed down. The problem we have is that the weeds will go to seed. The seed will scatter, and then we come by a mow. And we need to keep those poisonous, or those noxious weeds from going to seed.
Okay, so...
Are you comfortable with that?
Oh, how long do you wanna take with this?
Well, tomorrow might be a little quick. Do you want?
Okay. So for what, the 17th?
17th.
Okay.
Are you agreeable with that?
I'm fine with that. Has, uh, Mr. Quinn, have you looked at that agreement?
I haven't seen that at all.
Okay. Can we make sure Quinn looks at it, please?
I'll get a copy too. Well, I don't know if she wants to see it right now.
Why don't I just email, I'll email it to you right now.
It's fine.
Okay, the next item on business is public service on picking up trash on the lake, do we? Jay, you were...
Yeah, I've already discussed that. I mean, I, I mentioned it when, um, Papa My Life was here. A sheriff was very amiable to, um, useful public service to use that and using the, um, deputies, not the deputies, the, um, volunteer deputies.
So you're comfortable with...
Posse.
Thank you. The posse. I offered to take the lead, and he says, just leave it in my hands. I'll take care of all of it. I said, I thank you. And so he's got it under control.
So we're under control, okay.
We're under control. So if, what, if there's a particular lady, if we wanna get back to her and tell her that...
Which, that lady that gave us a letter?
Yeah. I've got it right. Why don't I, I'll tell you what, I'll just write. Yeah.
No, that was a gallon, what more?
This is, this is Ruth Callen Booth.
Why don't I just write her a, a note saying that, thank you for your note of April 14th and measures being taken, so it's not transparent. Okay, I'll take care of that.
That concludes what I have on our new and old business. We've already had two staff reports, and maybe we move into the human services report. And while she's coming, um, I wonder if we want to have some stationery printed?
Okay, thanks.
Something about, uh, Board of County Commissioners, uh, from the desk of, blank. So if you wanna write a letter for something, it's not a commissioner's letter, it's from the desk of Bob Katnick. Uh, and just leave for whatever we have, that would be, you just fill in whoever the desk is from and go on. Does that make seem reasonable to you guys, or what do you think?
I'm fine.
Do you just print the letterhead where you need it?
I mean...
With the, the company logo and the seal?
Well, I have the letterhead.
Good morning. How are you, dear?
Oh, stand up again. Make sure you messed up your tablet there.
You did see the note.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. She seems to be doing okay, considering, so excellent.
See, that was this, all three of us, and, and I'm looking at something from the desk of, or something.
From each of us.
Winkle, you want, want it this size?
I, I have something that's like half that size.
Like a note?
That just kinda says the same thing. It's not an official letter, but it's just a note that if I just wanna write somebody a note, has my name on it.
I mean, I could, I could do a, a Word doc template with the county seal at the top and then like put in each of you's names and...
That's fine. Just, we have a, a, a template and then we print it as we need it, but I think it's important if we have communication as a commissioner that we do it on a official letter again. Sorry about that. Hey!
Oh, no, that's okay. Just go right ahead. There's...
You're up on top now.
Well, there's always something going on and you always gotta deal with it, that's for sure, so...
How are you today?
Well, I'm okay, considering, well, spent an hour entering stuff yesterday and went to send it to the state and the computer was acting weird all day. And I thought it went, and then I went in to call, what we call post it, so they can see it. Can't find it, can't find it. So I finally called them and they said, we don't see it either. So I had to come in today and redo.
Oh, no.
You know, the computer was just jumping around and overlaying full, you know, screens that were already there and it was like, I don't know what this is. So I did it real early this morning before a lot of people got on and I got it all go through, so I was like, thank you.
Do you back up daily?
Oh, we back up with the state, but we're directly online with the state. Yeah, and that's what I was trying to do. I was trying to send it to them. And when I called them, they said, we've been having issues all day with the system too, and it's a county financial, well, it's the...
So it was probably the state system.
Yeah, so, well, or I don't know if it was our, yeah, it could be, or that we were having problems with, um, the internet, I don't know.
A combination.
Combination of everything. I know on Friday...
It was not good.
Chuck called us and I'm just like, we're just doing our normal work. We're not streaming music or watching videos. I...
He found, he found the issue.
Oh, okay.
He found the department.
Oh, okay, because I'm like, we're not doing anything here. We're just doing our normal work, so I don't know what that was about, but I'm going, okay, I, I don't know, it's not us. I'm looking around and two people were gone and it was just two of us and one of us like...
He can look at any computer at any time, so he did find the issue.
Oh, okay, 'cause he's gonna be, you guys gotta get over there, and I'm like, two of us aren't even on the computer, so, and the rest of us, and I'm over here at my desk, my computer's up and I'm not using the internet, so I don't know what's going on over there. Anyhow, okay.
Where are we starting?
Well, I always start with this one. And I don't know how you guys get them, so...
We get them by an attachment from Fender. So what's it called?
Yeah, it's called, uh...
Something on budget.
Expenditure and unexpenditure, yeah, statement of budget. That's the one I always start with.
Four months.
Yep. Yes, we are, and, um, and if you, are you guys there?
Well, Jay's still good.
Yeah, and she's getting there, so that's fine.
I don't see anything that jumps out at me on that page. Do you see something that we should be considering?
No, no, no. There is nothing there.
At this point, we should be about a third of the budget expended. And we have some areas that go over those. Uh, the medical transportation is...
Yeah, and those are...
It's over, but they're all 100% pass-through from the state.
They're 100% pass-through, so we don't, I just show you because we spend a lot of time and, time on that.
See, you're at this page. And then we'll have this one. Daycare.
Yep, got it.
Medical transportation, that pass-through thing is, um, it's pass-through.
Now, this is, is that this page you have? And I have ten of them, some of these after the...
Yeah, I've got them down the bottom here. So what are you saying, the medical transit?
Medical transportation, they, they, um, did a revalidation, which was a royal pain. And it has taken a long time to get it done, but it's done. But then they also set up a new, um, system on how to pay out. And this includes transportation, includes all providers, bill Medicaid, anything like that. And this new system is causing some issues for them. And so they're behind on getting funds to people, to providers and to us on our Medicaid transportation. We had a, I had a conversation with them about that the other day. The lady said, worry, we're working on it. We're gonna get it. It's on our agenda at our director's meeting, which is next Tuesday, that we're gonna talk about this system that they're having issues with, so that we can...
Yeah, you've got a different one than we did.
You don't have that one?
We, what we were sent does not look like that.
I don't have that. I've just opened all the tech. I have it in my book.
Really?
We got it someplace. Brenda got it for me.
Yeah.
I maybe, I'm looking at, the way I'm looking at is the 5-2 board pack.
That's what I'm looking at.
Must've been somewhere else. I just opened all of the attachments, so it's not... Maybe we could just make a photocopy of the couple you have.
I know one of those, one of those, is it an Excel file?
Yep.
Cause there's multiple pages at the bottom.
Yep. But I, that's where I was, but it doesn't have that detail.
I'm old-fashioned.
Me, I, I gotta have it in, yeah. Especially as many problems as if I've had with my computer.
Do you have a copy there?
I can, I, no, I don't know that she does, but I can make copies.
Well, I don't know.
She bring one for Jay to look at, and Donna and I can share one.
I would appreciate it.
My copy is not good because that copier over there is not working quite right, so...
This is the one that I was talking about. You're right about that.
Yeah, so I printed it out and then I made a copy of it and the copy didn't work.
Yeah, so down at the, in the, well, where it's...
Come down to right here.
Yeah, is what we're talking about. I mean, we're, we will get our reimbursement and we, yeah. We're just, it's, and it's 100%, so usually we don't have any kind of dollars. But they are having problems with that, trying to get those funds out to us, and it's not only, like I said, it's not only us, it's all providers and they're having a lot of issues. So it may look, you know, like we're not getting reimbursed, but which we probably aren't. Well, we haven't received any money for April and we should've got some. And they're still working on it. So if it looks funky later on, that's the reason why, is because there's issues.
We're actually out about $3,400.
Oh, yeah.
We've gotten some payments.
Oh, yes, we've got, April is the month that we haven't received payments and they're working on that. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, but everything else is, is fine and, um...
Now, we'll go to that first.
If you go to the, the state allocation thing, this is showing how we are. And we're doing, we're doing fine, here to date and, and stuff. Yeah, so we're doing fine on that.
You found that one, because it was different colors.
And then, uh, just our community service block grant, and those are our reimbursement, but we're fine on that. Energy outreach, um, those we don't pay. Those are automatically done. And we're, and we're fine. I just show you because we do spend time doing that and how much we spend on that.
Wait a minute, did we talk about foster care in Tana?
Uh, well, I don't have those. I broke out. They're on the...
Wait a minute, I'm just trying to find where you are.
Oh, I'm on these.
Page are you on?
I'm on the community service, the EOC or community service block grant.
Since there's only three of us, I'm sure, if you please just pray out a prayer.
See, I, you, I used to just do that. I would just bring them in beforehand. I can do that. I have no problem doing that.
I appreciate it.
And I mean, that way, if you guys can find them, and if not, we'll just go over them when we do it. But I can just say, right now, we don't have any problems. Everything looks fine. Well, the one thing I did wanna, and it should've been attached, but you probably can't find it, is I had said that I wanted to give you guys an idea of how much, how many households receive Medicaid. And I finally found one, but it's from February and I couldn't find anything beyond that, so I don't know if it's now.
And that's in our report.
Yeah, I sent it, so, but I don't know.
It's all right. I'm digging through it.
It was at the bottom, Jay.
Did you find that one?
Yeah. What she was talking about, if you go to...
Community service block grants.
Yeah. It's this, it's this one looks like that.
The tab it says.
Continue talking, I'll...
Well, it just shows the age group, members aged 21 and over, that there's 350. And members aged 21, I see, I don't quite understand. Oh, I read that one. Members 20 and under is 350. Members 21 and over, it shows 610. For a total of 960 for the county. But that's what they're showing us, but I don't really know. I don't really know if that's true or not, but that's...
Let me ask a question, Quinn. How many, and I know the number won't vary significantly, but how many new applicants do you receive, say on an average month? And then of those, how many actually receive benefits?
Oh, I could tell you that exactly, 'cause we track how many we come in, how many come in and how many are eligible and how many are not. And this month, I don't know. Um, and it does vary. Uh, some months more than others, obviously, but I could, like next...
Would you email that to me?
Okay.
Thank you.
You wanna just know for the month of April?
That'd be fine.
Okay. And, um, yeah, and it can vary. It can be food, it can be med, it can be adult financial, it can be Colorado Works.
Really, so how many people walk into your front door and how many walk out going, I got nothing, and how many walk out going, thank you for the help? That's all I'm curious.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah. I can give you a number.
It doesn't matter what help they get. I mean, I...
You just, you don't care. You just wanna know.
I'm just curious to know how many, how many people you service on a monthly basis.
Okay. Okay, and new applications, yeah, but we have a lot of people that come in for redeterminations on a monthly basis that, um, that we service. I mean, right now, we probably have 50 redeterminations that we're gonna work this month. It may even be more than that. And so some of them, we're seeing on, they're bringing stuff in to us and we, and we recertify them for benefits for the following month.
So recertification is they were denied a benefit?
No, recertification is like if you're on any program, you have to refill out paperwork either every six months or once a year to recertify.
To make sure you still certify.
To make sure that you're still... To make sure that you're still eligible. And so, every month, we've got people recertifying for all these different programs. So besides the new applications, we got recertifications coming in. So, but I can give you the number of recertifications we have.
Break out both.
Yeah, recertification and new application.
Faces show up going, "I'm here, I need help."
Oh, yeah, okay.
But those that walk out without anything, I might walk in and want some help, there's nothing to qualify for.
And I understand that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
This is not a negative, I just want to know how many people turn away.
Yeah, how many are.
Are 10% of people not eligible, even though they want some?
Yeah, how many people walk in and we find them ineligible?
That would be, I like that wording better than.
Yeah, because, and some of them, some of them are not eligible. Yeah, but, yeah, I do, so I can do that. I can do that for next month, and next month, I will bring, oh, yeah, no problem. No problem on that at all.
I'm looking here at the state allocations for foster, TANAP, and daycare. And as I interpret this, it's from July 1 to June 30. So the highest we have over here is, year-to-date, is 45%.
Yeah, we've used 45% of that.
And as long as you're underneath 75%, we're comfortable.
Yeah.
Because this is July 1.
It's got a bad date in here again. I always have to check those days. Who puts wrong dates in here, and I didn't catch that one, but anyhow, oh.
So, so it's not February?
No, it's, it's March.
It's March.
It's March. He does, he does the figures, but sometimes he doesn't come up there and change that month. And I usually check him, but I missed that one. Because the rest of them have March on them, but that one didn't.
Yeah, we have an allocation of 141,000, and we've only used 63,000 on the dates, so we're, we're in good shape.
Yeah, yep, we're doing okay. We are getting two new, well, the state does our computers, and every, so every two years, they do a refresh, a refresh is what they call it. So we're getting two new computers. On Friday, we, probably January, maybe it was, they got the new computers in, they called, emailed us and said, "Can we come up this day?" I said, "Sure," they come up, I came up to set them up, he leaves, he's gone, maybe an hour, hour and a half, two hours.
It didn't work?
No, oh, no, I get a call from the company that's sending, Deloitte, Deloitte does ours. He wanted to know if the guy was still there, and I said, "No, he was gone," you know, he left, and he goes, "Well, we just had a meeting with the state and found out we were not supposed to set those computers up yet." Sent the guy back out, come back from Pueblo to pick up those computers and take them away, and bring the old ones back, set them up, and now they're going to do it on Friday.
And what did they do?
Oh, like in January, something like that. It was the craziest thing where I was, and we're like, what difference could it possibly make when they set those up? And the guy from Deloitte, he just kept apologizing. He goes, "We had a meeting last week, and it was our understanding that when those were in, we could start setting them up." And I'm like, "Oh," didn't bother us as much as the guy that had to come back and pick them up. And there was a couple other counties that had the same thing happen, I'm like.
One thing that I see here, maybe you can.
I don't.
I think I know the answer, but under foster care, I see we had a major jump in the last three months, from 3,000 to 9,000, and we picked up some additional families in there.
Oh, we've got, we've got a kid in, she was in like a, she's in a treatment center, and so.
That's why they're expensive.
That's why that's so much, is because the treatment centers are more expensive. She's out of that now, and she's just, well, she's in a group home, so that's still, it's a little step down, but it's still expensive. But aware, she turned 18 this month, so we are just waiting until we get a opening in this other place, and then she's going to go in there, and then she's going to come off our rolls altogether, hopefully. Yeah, so we're just waiting.
Now, would she be on a Medicare Medicaid?
She'd be on, she's, yeah, she'll be on Medicaid, and she'll be on what's called independent living, where, and Chaffee County handles our Chaffee, because we don't, we're not big enough to have a home worker. And they have a housing project where she'd only be paying $200 for an apartment with rent and utilities included, and then she's going to go to Pueblo Community College for the Canyon City site, you know, they have campus there. So that's the plan for her, and she's excited to do that, so, but that's why you're seeing that.
So this is, but this is an example of a success story.
Hopefully, yes. No, but yes.
Well, I mean, we put all the steps in place.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, 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 for her to succeed, that's right. She's very bright, she really is. She, once we got her into that treatment center and found out where she was, because there was a lot of issues there, academically, she finished big time. She's, she's graduated already, and so there it is, you know, wait and start getting her into college. She's very bright, so that's very good. Yeah.
Sounds great, for her and good for you guys.
Yeah, so, okay, that's all I have right now. I can't think of anything else, and we're going to get this paperwork under control.
Is there anything you need from us that we have?
Uh, no, I don't think so, no.
Know where to find me if you do.
Yeah, yes, I do know where to find you. We don't know where to find guys, but now I, oh, you know what, we were working on a check. We got a rental assistance that we need signed, and I was going to bring that with me, and I'm not sure if I'll bring it on. Okay, okay, all right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. More paperwork, maybe, and he's got it all there, it's just.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I eventually found it.
I know, I know, it's just, but it's just, I'll just bring these, it's easier. I know what you're saying. I got something that they, they sent me in a Gmail account, and for lie for me, I can, I got the Gmail up, but I can't find the report that they're telling me that's there, and I was looking at that before you called, and I'm like, "Oh," crying out loud. Okay, guys, we'll see you later.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any more business to come to both of?
I don't know if we want to put it back on the agenda, but we, this past weekend, we received a correspondence from Jim Bradburn with answers to some of his questions.
I would like to follow it up, but I'd like it to be.
Another workshop, or?
I think a workshop makes sense, where the audience could participate again. I think that was very helpful and worthwhile. So, maybe it would make sense to talk to Jim, to find out when he can come, and then we can set it up, if that makes sense, but I think.
Could you take, take the lead on that?
I think we were anticipating maybe an evening meeting down at the bowling alley or something, depending on how many people we're expecting to have show up, but make sure that everybody in the community has a chance to come.
But he sent us some pretty comprehensive pieces of literature.
I'll need to put that out as a Reader's Digest version.
He may send, he sent you more than I saw, but I know that he sent something to you, but he got a lot of information, very interesting, I read it all.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, just, do you want to contact Jim?
Uh, I'll let Jim.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do it.
Good meeting.
I'm not trying to hurt anybody, hurry anybody, but I think we might have time for lunch.
Maybe. That's a first for you.
Is there anything else?
I am very comfortable tomorrow, I'm just, there's something I'm a little uncomfortable with. We didn't have a, I didn't have an up, I haven't been down to Whitmore with an update this week, because of timing of what's going on. We're awful close. I really want to get with Tom and Tony and get down there, find out where in the world are we. I know the grease trap's supposed to be delivered within the next few days. I'm anxious to get this project.
Done.
Put to bed. Oh, I did get an answer to a question, if I may, Mr. Chairman, on, the question was asked to me, since the water that we're draining with the some pumps going into the creek, that question came to me, I did follow up on that, as I promised. Tom Duke came back to me, and he said, "Since they have authority to drain the roof water into the creek," he said, "This would, this would go along with that, and we're fine with it." So, I have that in an email, so just in case sometime down the road, someone comes and says something, but he, he said we're okay.
I, I don't trust him, I'm sorry. I mean, we'll find out. We'll do some more checking. I think, well, the other one, let's, let's proceed along that line.
Yeah.
But I don't want this, because DEQ is who determines what goes in, and what's coming off the roof is rainfall or snowfall. And what we're taking now is underground water flow, and I don't, I, I don't, it's a small thing, but I just want to be sure it's not an end to come back to get us later.
And I, you know, being thorough is never wrong. Doing it right is important, so I absolutely agree with you. If you're, if we're concerned that maybe he's not telling us all the information, doesn't know it, or is incorrect, we ought to follow up further. I agree with that.
So.
I took his word for it, but I can follow up with this.
I think where I would go, two places. One would be the water, the state, state water engineer's office, and they do have a branch in Kewell. And then the other place I would potentially check with would be the, call it the Department of Health and Environment. I don't think they have anything to say about the discharges, but the engineer should be able to tell us, "Well, that's fine," or "We need to go to the Corv engineers to get a permit to put the water in, because there's a different source of water than we have off the roof."
Well, the other thing, Jay, is we need to find out what happened to that meeting from last week.
Yeah, we haven't had the mechanical meeting. I sent an email, I told you to send an email to Tom about it, and I just haven't heard back, we're rescheduled yet.
Okay.
Yeah, no, and then I'm going to videotape that, so that we have an archive of it.
Yeah.
Now, I talked to Tony Thursday, who was down there, the geological survey people, and he was there, so I just explained the pleasantries with him, and he seemed to indicate that things were pretty normal.
Yeah, we still have CenturyLink waiting on a response for those seven lines we discussed.
In terms of the elevator and everything, and stuff that, I think they, whatever bridges they had to cross, he felt they crossed them, but.
But I still haven't heard that all the keys, all the locks are in place with keys.
They weren't there when I was there a couple days ago.
Okay, because I've got Raven Woods wanting to come and install the blinds, but they can't do that until.
Absolutely agree with that comment.
Okay, folks.
I'm done.
Thank you, reconvene, or, I guess I already adjourned the meeting, so.
Actually, you didn't.
All right, I did, well, adjourn the meeting, Board of County Commissioners at 11:50.